So you're good to go, John.
Okay, good evening. This is the Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, Special Meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan and Connecticut. Lynn, we are not yet in a hybrid format, so why don't you explain how you're going to run the meeting?
Sure. Um, this is a Zoom format, and under the new rules, just um, everyone who's going to speak tonight, which is all the commissioners, if you speak, you just need to state your name for the record every time you speak, so it's clear who you are. This is a public meeting tonight, so there should be no comments in the chat from anyone from the public. We're not taking public comment, and the record is closed as of May 25th. If any commissioners want to speak, feel free to either jump into the conversation or raise your hand. And we'll be displaying all of the resolutions that are up for discussion tonight on the screen, so everyone, including the participants, and all the commissioners can see it.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Do the roll call. John Goodwin, I am here. John Criss.
Here.
Kristin Nielsen.
Here.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire Tiscornia.
Here.
Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Arthur Cassavan.
Here.
Liz Herring.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so seedings. We have two things on the agenda tonight. The first one, discussion of the New Canaan Library. And then the second one is discussion of inclusionary zoning regulations. For purposes of the New Canaan Library, Mr. Bash is seated for Mr. Williams. So those who will be participating in the discussion and the votes will be myself, John Goodwin, John Criss, Kristin Nielsen, Dan Radman, Claire Tiscornia, Ken Turner, Dick Ward, Arthur Cassavan, and James Bash. And of course, everybody on the commission is welcome, of course, to provide input when we get into the inclusionary zoning discussion. So as everyone knows, we have two options, two potential votes, Option A and Option B, as we referred to it. First, I would like to thank all of the commissioners for all of their input. I know over the past 10 days or so, there's, really through the entire process, and there's been a lot of very good input, so I thank you for all of the attention to this very important application. What we thought we would do is, if everybody's comfortable with it, is we would have Lynn take us through each of the decisions, first going through Option A and then going through Option B. You know, of course, the the objective here is particularly those who, you know, are inclined to go with Option A, provide input for Option A, those are inclined to go Option B, provide input for Option B, and hopefully we can get to the point where we're comfortable enough to hopefully take a vote tonight. So Lynn, why don't you take us through, let's start with Option A. And as everybody knows, the order, we'll go through it on, James, actually, you're right, I'll get to you in a second. The order we'll go through will be the overlay zone, the map change, and then the special permit and the site plan. And when we take a vote or votes, that's the order in which we'll do it as well. But before we get going, I do want to recognize Mr. Bash for some comment. James?
Uh, yes. James Bash, for the record. So I wanted to respond to Brian Smith's letter. So I went to the library on June 30th after being tasked with partly drafting Option B by Commissioner Goodwin. The purpose was to briefly reacquaint myself with the inside of the building. It is helpful to get a reminder of a physical picture in one's mind rather than electronic document. And numerous schematics are within the public record, well beyond what my very limited questions entail. I asked a library staffer if she could point out roughly where one of the walls of the 1913 library was in the physical space of the lobby. She did not know, but she got Cheryl Capitani, the Assistant Director of the Library, to answer the question. Cheryl informed me that she had very little knowledge of the 1913 building. We had a friendly, roughly five-minute informal walk in the library where close to no information was exchanged. Now, I know that a number of commissioners have recused themselves on various applications for different reasons. Brian Smith writes that I should recuse myself to quote, "Avoid the hint of impropriety, even if I may have harbored good, though misguided intentions, in doing what I did." First, a roughly five-minute walkthrough of something well within the public record is not misguided. It's appropriate diligence. Second, I'm not going to recuse myself to avoid subjective, quote, "hint of impropriety" in the interpretation of a lawyer representing the library in a divisive application where I have publicly expressed a different view than the applicant on what constitutes meaningful preservation in the context of the POCD and Village District Guidelines. I especially won't do it with such little case law substance in their claim, where there isn't even an attempt to explain how a roughly five-minute walk with a library representative, no less, would be prejudicial. Finally, I'm not going to be pressured away from what I think is doing what I think is the right thing in making a determination over this application. Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you, James. Okay, so Lynn, can we start with Option A, please? And if you can bring that on the screen and walk us through it.
Hey, give me one second to pop it up. So, um, can you all hear me or am I muted?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I, um, what I did was I took the original one that I popped up at the meeting on June 29th, and I just redlined, and I added in everyone's comments so that it would be clear what was being changed. And uh, there were a lot of comments. Many of you sent in written drafts, some of you gave oral comments, some of you commented on the drafts that were recirculated. I know there are some comments already on Option A. Some of you have left, I've highlighted on this version, some of the questions some of you had. And I've made a note, like in finding 14, whether the commission as a whole wanted to delete or keep it. And similarly with finding 17. The answer, sorry.
And can we just walk through each one? Can we start with?
Do I start, do I start at the top?
Yeah, with the overlay zone.
No, I started the overlay, that is, the last time we started the overlay, and you guys wanted to go to the special permit first.
As I said, I think it's best if we go in the order in which we'll end up voting on these.
Okay, sorry, that's my bad.
Worst.
Sorry about that.
John, the order that you'll vote typically would be the regulation amendment, then the overlay zone, the map change, then the special permit.
The overlay zone followed by the map change, followed by the special permit.
Right, the regulation followed by the map and then the special permit. Yeah.
That's what.
Okay, so when you said the overlay zone, I thought you meant the map, but you mean the regulations.
I mean the regulation, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, overlay zone for Option A.
Okay, so page one, any issues, commissioners? Okay, keep going, Lynn.
So page two.
Maybe.
This is page two. On this page, I took out the number five, the condition that uh, was with respect to Option B, to preserve specifically certain aspects and to edit the overlay zone with respect to preservation.
Okay. Okay, and so then you have number five, everybody comfortable with number five, that's new, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's plantings, number six. Electric charging stations, is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. And then seven was my idea, everybody's comfortable with that? Okay, let's go to the next page, please, Lynn. Okay, hold on, I gotta, I'm moving my attendee box. Reasons for approval. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, super. Lynn, let's go to the map change.
Give me one second. So this is the map change. Just to note, there's no, there's no difference between the Option A and Option B map change, because none of the commissioners offered edits or changes to the map change resolutions. So even though there's an Option B and an Option A, they're identical.
Okay, great. So we'll do one walkthrough on this one. Everybody okay with page one? Scroll down a little bit, please, Lynn. Good. Everybody good? Hey, let's go to page two, scroll up, there you go.
Okay. John Criss, I have one comment on point number one, which discusses the subject properties. The second sentence in that point ends with the word appropriate, sort of begs the question, appropriate because of what? Do we need to perhaps provide some colored commentary on what appropriate means? It's somewhat addressed in point two, but I'm wondering whether we need to address that in point number one as well.
Hey, well, what would your view be? As John points out, it's addressed in two as well. Do you think we need to flesh out?
Yeah, I think you could just take that sentence out, just delete it in number one. Because it doesn't add anything, really.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
So just to be, this is John Criss again, just to be clear, under point number one, there will be only one sentence that says the subject properties, and the second sentence, beginning with the word amend, amending, would be dropped, and then would be followed by the list of the parcels and their identification. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I have no issue with that.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, everybody okay with the rest of the page? Okay, super. Okay, Lynn, let's go to the special site plan for Option A. Hey Lynn, if you could take us to the top, please. There you go. Okay. Anything on the first page? Okay, everybody good? Let's go to the next page.
John.
Hi, Dick.
Dick Ward. I ha, I will afterwards perhaps convey directly with Lynn just some very, uh, not substantive things, but just, uh, you know, smoothing the writing a bit. I did provide quite a bit of information the other day along those lines, but a few things I think still need to be, it's, you know, a comma here and there, or a comma that shouldn't be there, something that is not capitalized, that should be capitalized, or vice versa. That kind of, uh, just clarification to make it really read better.
So, good.
I mean, there's no point in going through that kind of detail now. I think it's unnecessary. And it would have no change on whatever might or might not be approved tonight. It would be simply just sort of cleaning the language a bit. Dick, it won't change the language at all, though, will it? It won't change the language. I mean, it's, it's sort of, you know, maybe it's too picky, but I guess that's what happens when you're a lawyer. You know, things like dates, if it's a day followed by a year, the year should be in commas. I mean, that's what I was taught when I went to college. So, you know, it's little things like that, just to. If it's a, yeah, if it's a comma or a capital letter, uh, something of that nature, that's not a problem, as long as you don't change the actual language of the resolution, because that's what, if it's adopted, that's what the commission will be adopting. And you, one of the things we want to avoid is changing resolutions after the vote. So, so, you know, whether it's, I mean, for purposes of adding a comma and making, you know, correcting that stuff, that's, that's not a problem, as long as the language doesn't change, the wording, there's no change in any wording. If there is, that you're suggesting it should be done now, so that there's one vote. Okay, no, I accept that. I won't change any, any of the wording. Would be just a cap here, or not, or comma, or not.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Okay, everybody okay with this page? Okay, Lynn, scroll down, please. Okay, so the beginning of the find, hold up, Lynn. So the beginning of the findings on the top page. Okay, let's go to the next page. Okay, everybody good on this page? Okay, let's go to the next page, Lynn. Okay. Item number eight, I've got some thoughts on this. I don't feel overly strong about these. On number eight, it says institute is unreasonable. I thought unreasonable was a little bit of a tough word. I would suggest should not be required. Anybody against that?
I just, this is Dan. I know this is Option A, but I just don't agree with the statement that the 1913 and 36 buildings, only two walls remain.
Okay.
Yes, it's just simply not true.
So, so this is James Bash to Dan's point. If we look at the Cross Key Architects' report, when asked the question of the 1913 building is considered intact, he said it is not 100% of what it originally was when it was built in 1930, in 1913 and the 30s, but most of the original building is present. He goes on to say that also 50% of the south wall and most of the west wall appear to be present, based on a comparison of the current and original floor plans. And then we, I think, I hope we can be on the same page in thinking about the north and east facade being intact from its original construction as well. If we're using the full portion of the north wall that includes the 1913 six wall as well. So I don't understand to Dan's point how that adds up to two, around two walls.
This is John Criss. Some of the walls that were presented to us are partial. And much of the 1913 library was deconstructed when the 1936 engulfment occurred. So there have been a series of elimination of exterior walls and other changes to the to the building over the years, which were even more severe after the current construction of the library format was completed. The foundations seem, appears to be intact. But the, what you see as far as the walls, a significant portion is, has been eliminated often many years ago.
So, um, James Bash, to that point, Liz, when you have the chance, can you pull up slide number 30 in the New Canaan Preservation Alliance deck? I believe the date is 5/25.
Okay, give me a second.
Sure, take your time, thank you.
The library also presents some information on what pieces of the original buildings are still extant.
That may be. Yeah, but there's, uh, this is Dan Radman. To that point, though, some of the information that the library presented is not accurate. For example, the square footage that they represented, that is the 1913 library, is completely inaccurate. It's not 1,300 square feet, it's significantly larger. So I think we have to do our own due diligence and understanding what is the actual footprint of the original libraries, and not just take it verbatim, what's, what's in the library's presentation. I think the slide that James has requested to be called up can help explain that.
A useful guestimate, perhaps.
No, it's pretty accurate, actually.
Which slide did you tell me again?
I believe it's slide number 30. I should, I should have mentioned as well, while Lynn is pulling this up, that just to kind of continue the quote from the Cross Key Report, he also goes on to say, "Many of its character defining features, such as the building's form and design, exterior envelope and materials, including stone, brick, windows and trim, front portico, interior wall painting, wood flooring under the carpet, still exist." In his opinion, the building has enough character-defining features left to make it culturally, educationally, economically, and environmentally beneficial to the town, and is therefore intact.
Wait a second. Let me pull it up from the web, because it's not pulling up from the drive.
That's it, Lynn, thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Is there any way of blowing that up a little more, Lynn? Yep, and it's just the page, page before.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
Okay, wow. Okay, great. Thank you. So again, people are obviously free to debate this, but I thought this was an important part of the public record. And what you can see in that green coating are those walls that are original to the 1913 building. The yellow portion of, of that schematic is removed walls, as Commissioner Criss mentioned, for additions to the building. And you can see that the 1936 building, the gallery and the walls, the walls coated in blue from that. So I think what you see here is that the east facade, the walls are intact, according to the presenters of this data. Again, consistent with what I think we're getting from the Cross Key Report as our independent consultant. You can see the east facade is intact. You can see the west wall is a large portion of it has been removed. To Dan's point, when I think Lisa Oldham or might have been others talked about the existing 1913 building, I believe they were only referencing the 1,300 square feet that encompasses the office and the salon room. And not that rectangular structure behind it, to the west of it, I should say, which is the lobby. So I think Dan, and it can be talked about more when we discuss Option B, estimated a square footage of roughly 2,700 square feet for the 1913 building, which again encompasses the salon room, the office and the lobby, and roughly 700, 800 square feet for the 1936 gallery. So again, if we're going off of this, there is much more than two walls that are intact.
Right, I think the, the point I was trying to make is that the walls have not been demolished. They have not disappeared, they have not been removed. The walls of the 1913 library have been modified, as that floor plan shows, to create larger openings for the new program that was introduced back in the 30s and back in the 70s when the addition was done. But if you look at the existing floor plan to the left, which is circled, and the, the green, blue, and yellow floor plan, the, the thickness and the entirety of the structure and the integrity of that structure is still present, it's still there, it's holding up the roof that's above it. So I, I just, that's the reason that I don't think the, the statement in item eight is entirely accurate. We need to rephrase that.
Okay, so Dan, without how would you suggest rephrasing but being concise? Because you did do develop it in more, in Option B, as both of you gentlemen know, so.
I, yeah. I, I just finds that the I have a suggestion for a sentence. Sure. The commission finds that requiring that the remaining parts of the 1913 and 1936 building is not necessary.
So are you suggesting, John, you just pull out the, considering that approximately two walls of those structures remain?
What we're doing is stating the conclusion that it's not necessary. There seems to be no disagreement among the commission or anyone else that I think material portions of the former buildings have been demolished. Argue, there can be different views on exactly how much, but that some of it has been taken down is unambiguous. The issue is what to do with the parts that remain. By saying the commission finds that requiring that the remaining portions, and there are remaining portions, doesn't state how big those portions are of the 1913 and 1936 buildings, I'd say buildings plural, since they're really two different buildings that have been stuck together. That is remaining is a reason is not needed, unnecessary.
Right, commissioners who would be inclined to potentially support option A, how do you feel about that?
I would go along with that, Dick Ward.
Okay.
I'm Claire Tiscornia, I would go along with that too.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep it as pithy as possible in one sentence that doesn't address issues that do not need to be addressed.
Okay, Lynn, do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great.
Do you want me to go back to the document?
Yeah, please, sorry.
Let, let me ask John, this is Dick Ward speaking, John, is the last sentence still remain? The, the sentence that is thus the entire 1913, 1936 buildings do not exist on site? And significant portions would need to be rebuilt in order to create a standalone 1913 and or 1936 building? Does that remain in?
My suggestion would be no. We're simply state as simply as possible, the commission finds that requiring that the remaining portions of the 1913 and 1936 library buildings that, that remain is unnecessary. Saying reasonable, I would agree with Commissioner Goodman that, that, you know, it's a bit of a loaded word. I'm not sure it gets us anywhere. I try to avoid the loaded words and saying unnecessary is about as neutral as I come up with. I'm open to better words, but I think it's, it's a little less loaded than unreasonable. That's how I came up with the language.
You okay with that, Dick?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, let's keep going down. Lynn, why don't you scroll to the bottom of this page, please? Okay, stop there, please. Everybody okay with that?
No, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Claire Tiscornia. Sorry, I just had it up on my screen, it was bigger, yeah, here we go. Number 14. This is the commission believes incorporation of the 1913, 1936 buildings into, into situ into the new library design would have been the preferred option. I don't remember ever voting on that and I don't remember us ever agreeing, saying that that was the preferred option. Can we take that out?
This is Commissioner John Chris, I would agree with Commissioner Tiscornia that I don't see a reason to keep point 14 in, I would make a similar comment regarding point 11. I don't see its purpose. So I would eliminate 11 and 14. I don't know what Commissioner Tiscornia thinks about it, but it's my view. They sort of say the same thing.
I agree.
It's Ken Turner. But there were some commissioners that did make this statement and believe that it could have been integrated or be a part of it, so perhaps the wording could be some of the commissioners.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, what about as I was looking at this, I, I believe striking most of 14, but then the part of 14 that then goes on to say nonetheless, P and Z believes an improved preservation of the 1913 library can still be achieved. What about adding that to 11? Because we are, I mean, the point of, of option A is still to achieve an appropriate preservation.
That makes sense.
Yep.
I agree, except you would want to change it to some, I believe.
Mr. Cass, your name for the record?
Arthur Cassavan, I'm sorry.
So do you want to say that some commissioners believe this and some believe that?
Mr. Chris, just state your name.
Oh, sorry, John Chris.
It's Pete Gelderman, can I weigh in one quick second?
All right, Pete.
The resolution is a collective statement of the commission and it shouldn't have statements in it that some of the members decided A and so, some of the members decided B, when, when this, this resolution will either pass or it won't. If it does pass, it's a collective statement of the commission. So it's inappropriate to put language in a, in a resolution of approval that talks about conditions that are not being adopted. Or that references contrary perspectives, that's in, that's in option B. And so the, the resolution should be consistent from top to bottom. It, it shouldn't second guess itself.
That's, that's John Chris, that sounds like a lower advice that we shouldn't say. I would suggest dropping 11 and in what is now 14, building on Chairman Goodman's comments saying the commission believes a meaningful preservation of remaining portions of the 1913 and or 1936 buildings can still be achieved. It's about as Catholic small c as I can think to state that statement.
Commissioners on, or?
Well, so I, I just have a general, sorry, James Vash, I just have a general question about that. If we're going to make a theoretical statement that we believe something can still be achieved. What, what I'm confused about is if preservation is nowhere within the text language, if I'm correct, in the overlay zone draft day, there's no enforceability of anything regarding preservation. So why would we theoretically believe that preservation of the 1913 library can be achieved if there's no regulatory or enforceable framework for it, for any level of preservation?
Chris, the, the commission is often stated in decisions that we would encourage such various behaviors on the part of applicants, which is without splitting too many hairs, more or less what is being stated here. So I would say there has been precedent for it, whether Commissioner Bash believes that this is appropriate or inappropriate. Precedent is a different conversation, but you know, we've been down this road before.
Well, as we discussed in our prior meetings, special permit is the vehicle to make those requirements. Right, Pete?
To make those suggestions? You mean, John, as opposed to requirements?
Yeah, no, we're, we're making, we're, we're putting into an option A, we're putting into a place, we're putting into place a process with the library to achieve a certain level of preservation.
Well, it, what you're, but what you're saying is that the commission has a belief that doesn't come with any obligation on the part of any party.
Well, that, that's later on in, in this.
Permit. No. My, my understanding in asking this question to to Lynn before, who clarified it for me, is that the special permit is an administrative document. And the overlay zone, that regulatory framework is a legislative document that conveys enforceability. So if we're talking about requirements, a minimum level of requirements as opposed to beliefs, you need to incorporate that language within the overlay zone.
Well, then we, we would throw out both options A and option B.
No, because what, what you'll see in option B is that the overlay zone language actually does have requirements for preservation.
Pete, in, in option A, we have the process we're putting into place with the library.
What's the process, John? You muted yourself.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, you were swearing at me, okay.
This is Dan Radman, just, just be aware that for the finding section of option A, Mr. Chris just recommended, and I believe Mrs. Tiscornia agreed that we should strike item number 11 and item number 14, both of which are the only places where the word preservation is present in option A, in the findings.
So I'm sorry, so Pete, in item number eight?
Yep.
Okay, so 90 days after the date of approval, the new Canaan library will present preservation options.
You're on, you're on conditions.
Conditions.
Yeah. These are conditions of approval.
Right, no, that's, yes, that's that's yeah, that's a binding condition if it's in a condition of approval. I, I guess I'm just looking at the language in the findings, which I guess are supporting the conditions of approval, so in that context it's, it's fine. I mean, I, you know, the, the commission believes language I've, I've mentioned before, I don't think is appropriate language, the commission finds or in the finding section, the commission finds something is better, is a better way to phrase it, but at any rate.
Okay, well, let's work on that wording then. This is James Vash, Pete, can you clarify whether or not preservation is in any way required if it's not in the overlay zone?
Well, it's, it's not required in the overlay zone, obviously, but the condition of approval is that the, that the library and the preservation alliance will, will work to try to work that out. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be in the regulation to permit them to try to work it out. Now, there may be a tweak in the language in the regulation that should be added to to talk about that in the event they do work something out.
But, but Pete, is there, I think there's a legal, I think there's a substantive difference between the permission
Your name?
James Vash. There's, there's a substantive and legal difference, I would imagine, between the permission to work something out and the requirement, a minimum requirement or some standard of which to be worked out.
Right, I, I don't disagree, as I read condition eight, it's not a requirement. The requirement is they'll work diligently.
Okay, so, so James Vash, if, if, if it's the case that commissioners who are likely to vote for option A want to pursue that. And my understanding is that they want to have some level of preservation that is required. That it, given what Pete is saying and what Lynn has described him before, it would need to be incorporated into the overlay zone. If the commissioners don't, who, who would choose that option, don't want to have a requirement, that's obviously your volition, but I don't think there should then be the expectation. There should be the hope based up on good faith that there will be preservation, I'm not saying it's not going to happen. But there certainly, it doesn't seem to be a requirement of it.
John, you, do you read condition eight as a requirement? Or do you want it to read as a requirement? I read it as a as a condition that they engage in you know, good faith efforts, basically.
We
This is Dick Ward, it says that they'll work diligently to ensure. Doesn't that sound like a requirement? I think that's what's intended.
James Vash, my understanding, Dick, is it's a matter of which document the language is placed in. The overlay zone is an enforceability document that has a regulatory framework and that the special permit has administrative substance to it, but it doesn't have regulatory substance to it.
So going back to Pete, Pete, item eight, 90 days after the date of approval, the new Canaan library will present preservation options appropriately preserving meaningful and significant portions of the existing library buildings older than 1937. The new claim in life, you know, so they will come back to us and present options.
Okay, and, and I think where, what James is saying is that then the ability to put that requirement on the library probably ought to be in the regulation itself. He's probably right about that, that if the, if that's going to be something that they're bound, any condition in a special permit needs to be authorized by the regulations. That's one of the basic tenants is that the, the regulations have to authorize the condition that's being imposed. So if the commission wants to create that as a condition of approval, then there should be something in the regulation itself that authorizes the commission to do that.
Okay, I mean, let me, for those of you who are on option A, I think that's what we were thinking, is it not, or does anyone disagree?
Agreed.
Okay.
See, I'm watching, this is John Chris, more of a technical issue on what needs to be said where. We still haven't gone through all of the findings, we sort of got to about number 14 and then we sort of skipped. So we may want to go through the rest of the findings before we move on to to the rest, other matters in this document. But I think there was a sense that some appropriate commemoration, use another word if you like, but of the older parts of the building be done by the library. And we haven't quite gotten to the, the nitty gritty of exactly what that means yet.
Well, in response to Mr. Bash bringing up the issue, we jumped ahead. Okay, so where do you want to go, John Chris, you want to go back to?
Or, I'm sorry, this is Claire Tiscornia. Commissioner Chris, you should probably add some language about the regulations into these into these findings. Well, is my understanding that Mr. Gelderman said we should do? Which reflects the condition of the 90 days, we would have to add it up into the findings as well?
More importantly, into the regulation. Into the, into the overlay zone regulation. And that can be a fairly simple sentence that simply in the new regulation authorizes the commission to require an applicant to you know, provide information within one year of the whatever, I mean, we can, that language is fairly easy to come up with in the regulation itself. It would mirror the condition in number eight of the conditions so that it would be authorized then in the new, in the new zoning regulation.
What would the language sentence be, the commission may require applicants to take appropriate actions in order to preserve various natural and manmade features of the site?
Yes, something like
Pretty generic.
Yep, that would work, the commission may, at its discretion. You don't like to have a lot of discretion in zoning regulations, but in the case of a special permit application, I think you can have a little bit of it, and I think that language would work.
Lynn, did you get? Lynn, did you get that? So now we're going back to the overlay zone for option A.
Could you could you repeat the wording, Mr. Chris, please?
Because you remember it, the commission may require applicants, I think that's the right term, to take actions to preserve natural and or manmade features on site. It's about as broad as I can I can figure, and it's pretty simple.
And so one technical question, do you want me to just add it as an as a a new section? They their last section is M? Or do you want me to find out, figure out where it would fit with like under this, they have a section K called design review, and they have K three is all about their design guidelines?
I would think a separate section, but I would seek and put from attorney Gelderman on we're best to slot something like this in.
Well, any place really is okay, but here's a question I have, Lynn. The the resolution on option A to adopt the zoning regulations.
Yeah. Do you want me to bring it up?
Well, no, I have it in front of me. I I have it copied. But where where are the actual regulations? Where is the proposed regulation in the resolution?
I didn't pop it in as I meant it would be it's their schedule A and since.
Is there a schedule A referenced in here? I didn't.
No, I did not.
The regulation has to be part of the resolution.
Okay.
You have to adopt a a regulation, an amendment to the zoning regulations and the wording, the the actual language of the regulation needs to be part of the resolution. That's what you're doing. You're approving that amendment to the regulations. So it should be in the resolution.
Okay.
That's really what the commission is voting on is changing the rigs. So that language needs to be in front of the the commission.
Do you want me to pull it up?
I would.
Yeah, that's.
I think in whatever we do on this application, we have to get every jot and tittle correct.
Okay, give me a second. Do you want me to go specific sections? Do you guys want to read?
I thought we were going to the overlay zone resolution.
Oh, the overlay is, I thought you were going to the regulation amendment, the regulation amendment. Sorry.
Yeah, it should John, it should go, there should be language in the regulation if you're going to to regulate, you're approving the regulation. So if there there needs to be a language in there that gives the commission the authority to to require, you know, to to do what John Chris said. So it can be. Can you scroll all the way? Is that the last page, Lynn?
No, they go to their their thing ends on section M. It's called expiration and completion agreement. But this is all the design review. They talk about the building exterior design, the landscaping.
Okay. What section talks about the the site plan itself? It's probably toward the beginning.
The site plan is they talk about special permit approval for what their permitted uses, the
Standards go, there there's standards someplace, right? There's site plan standards.
Yeah.
You could add it there as number three.
Okay. So H three.
H three.
That works for me.
So just to not only does this whole regulation need to be in the overlay zone amendment, but there does there need to, there needs to be a finding here that there's an edit being made it me on the number eight that we're adding H three and that we're adding the line that the commission may require applicants to take actions to preserve natural or manmade features on site.
Yeah, the the regulate, the the resolution that you'll be adopting should reference the regulation amendment as either it's labeled, I think, at the top. When you put it at the top, I think it said schedule A. So that someplace in the resolution, the commission should be adopting the regulation amendment set forth in schedule A as amended, which would be adding, it may not be the only thing that gets added, but that adds H three. You can make modifications to the applicant's proposed text amendment as long as you're not going outside the scope of the outside the scope of the of the purpose of the amendment. I mean, you you couldn't put a an amendment into this regulation that prohibited the sale of liquor, for example. So it's, but that's consistent with you know, that's something you can do as a commission. You could add that language in there. It's not outside the the scope of the of the actual request. So you have that you can you, in other words, you don't have to adopt the the regulation as submitted or reject it as submitted. You can make changes to it, but the it's important to have the authority in the regulations that support whatever conditions you may put into your resolution. Your your special permit site plan resolution.
So Pete, where do you actually put the wording?
I think in H, I think we create a new provision in H site plan standards and make it number three.
Right.
And then just add the language that Commissioner Chris referenced and and put it in there. And then there, then there's authority in the regulation to to do what you did in the in the resolution as a condition.
Okay.
So the issue, just to be clear, is one ex ante authority has to exist in order to take an action, and authority will exist because we're putting this new sentence in.
Yes, to impose a condition, yes, to impose.
Issue is, does how, if at all, does the commission wish to exercise this authority? Okay, fair enough.
Well, yeah, I mean, that through the imposition of a condition in this case, yes, yes.
This is Commissioner Chris. I'm fine with including the suggested sentence as number three under H site plan standards. I would also note that this would seem to be important, no matter what the commission decides, that this authority needs to exist. And this would be the place to put it, according to our legal advice.
Hey Lynn, let us know once you have all that good to go.
I have it. I have it noted. So let me move on to the next document I can.
Okay, so you guys want to go back to the special permit site plan? So Pete, we're good there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, give me a second to pull it up. You can keep talking.
This is Commissioner Cassavant. I I would like to go back if we haven't gone beyond this already. I do believe that item 11 should be left in the document. We might want to amend the wording a little bit, but I believe that that language is important as a finding relative to whatever decision we take.
So Art, do you want to take a shot at the language?
Yes, I'll be glad to. Commission finds that the property located at 151 Main Street is owned and operated by the New Canaan Library, and the commission would like or would prefer to see preservation of the 1913 and or 1936 building incorporated into the new building or site design, just changed to prefer. That allows us to speak for the entire commission without necessarily specifying how that will be incorporated.
Okay, I think that brings in the point that I was trying to make on the second part of 14. So I think we could delete 14, but John, Chris, Claire, you were contributing on this, Dick Ward.
That's okay.
John, Chris.
Eliminating 14, I think it's appropriate as far as the the comments from Mr. Cassavant. I'm not sure I would use the word prefer or desire or recommend something a little, assuming that where we're going with this is that there will be some requirement. Exactly what that's going to mean, we haven't gotten to yet, but some requirement stated by the commission that the library would take some physical portion or portions of the current older buildings and have them remain on site in some way, shape or form. Saying this as generically as possible, assuming as this is the direction of travel on this, I think something slightly stronger should be stated here saying that to say owned and operated by the commission wants to see or as opposed to prefer something stronger than the verb prefer.
Desires?
Believes it is appropriate. How about that?
I'm fine with that. That's Cassavant.
Preservation in 1913 and or 1936 buildings incorporate the new building or the new site design because there's flexibility and they remain in C two, part remain in C two. A wall is moved somewhere. It gives us flexibility in exactly what that means. It provides a lot of room to run. The the details would be in the in the conditions. This is just keying up the condition. So anyway, that's my thought for the day on that.
This is James Bash. Another angle that I'd be much more comfortable with is something along the lines of consistent with the provisions or the the stated goals of the P O C D and the village district guidelines.
This is John Chris. I I would not see that as a good way to go since what we're essentially doing is coming with some different guidelines.
So James Bash, I guess my issue is if when when Pete said before, this is something that all commissioners are kind of abiding by this language, it's it's going to be very difficult to achieve a consensus on this because we just have different views on what constitutes a meaningful level of preservation or what's in accordance with the P O C D and village district guidelines. So I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can really find a a resolution that's going to fit for everyone on this.
Probably not.
Well, hence option A and option B.
Yeah, but even regardless of what option you choose, you know, I guess we're associated with this text, all commissioners as a body.
These proposals haven't been voted on yet.
Okay. Dick or Claire or anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay.
So what's this is Dick Ward. What's the final wording on 11?
Art? Art and Jim, John?
I I I'm fine with, John, could you repeat your final form of that? I was fine with it. That's Cassavant speaking.
Remember, the commission finds that the property located at 151 Main Street is owned and operated by the New Canaan Library and the commission desires. Believes it appropriate. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Tiscornia. Believes it is appropriate to preserve, to see preservation of the 1913 and or 1936 building incorporate into the new building or the new site design. This gives us complete flexibility on what what, how much and where something is preserved.
Okay.
We deal with the definition of all that and what that means in practice in the conditions. This is really teeing that up.
Right.
Okay.
So James Bash, just in regards to, you know, trying to find a language, trying to find some level of consensus, we recognize we're probably not all going to agree. Lynn, if you don't mind just pulling up that slide 30 again, I I want to see if there's a, I just want to get the thoughts from commissioners that are slanted towards choosing option A, what their thoughts are on one thing. It's, and what I'm going to describe is not the preferred option for me, which will be entailed in option B, but I I just want to try to maybe get a little bit more teeth in a worst case scenario from an option B perspective around what might be acceptable commissioners for option A. So if you can pull that up, Lynn, I just wanted to spitball something.
Sure, just one second, because there's a lot of documents open on my
I would imagine. I would imagine.
This is Dick Ward. Jim, I've been leaning toward option A. Believing that option A would require. That some meaningful portion of the 1913 building. Would remain either in situ or elsewhere on the site. And I think that when we get into the conditions, you'll see that the meaningful portion. Includes the facade pillars and roof. Shape. So that's that's sort of what I view option A to to require.
Understood, and I appreciate that, Dick. So i- in that vein, I wanted to throw something out again, not the option that I would vote for. But just to see whether there's potential consensus among those predisposed to option A. So if you look at the the schematic on the right again. The. The the part of the library, there's those two regular rectangular structures in the 1913 structure. The part that is roughly 1300 square feet that encompasses the office. And then the salon room, and if you could think of the west wall, which a portion of that west wall, according to, you know, that code has been removed. However, when you think about what's most significantly intact, what's historic, what's facing Main Street? What what kind of gives that indelible sense of character of this building in many minds, not all certainly, but in many minds. To what really fits within the the character, their sense of character in place within the town, I really believe it's the. The front facade and. That 1300 square feet significantly intact. Building with the beautiful exterior envelope and the trim and the windows and the portico and everything else, even though the portico I recognize was. Using materials from a later date that encompasses, if you could just think of that west wall there. Being enclosed. It's around again a 1300 square foot structure. At that point, it wouldn't require, I would think, a huge amount of time for reconstruction and updating because of. It's significantly intact. Including the exterior envelope, as I mentioned, and it would also leave. A significant amount of room for a town green that wouldn't otherwise be the case. If you incorporated the the lobby or the gallery. Now, again, my my interpretation of the P O C D and the village district guidelines. Is to have a more significant portion, either remain in situ or we'll go through the different options about. You know, the 1913 and or 1936 building. Move to a different location on site. My my own feeling is in C2. But what do commissioners that are that are predisposed to option A feel about the idea of preservation? Of that roughly 1300 square foot space. That would, I think, accomplish a good amount of the library's goal to have a larger green. And. It certainly is a significant step up from, in my mind, a slice of the eastern facade that might very well abut. The gas station or I can't really think of where else it would be on on the parcel. And and so, Dick, you know, this is, it's a great question for you, since I think you you mentioned what you think is. An appropriate level of preservation. If if, what do you think of that? What other other commissioners think of that potential? Is it a nonstarter or is that? Is that a potential compromise from an option A perspective?
Well.
This is Dan Radman. Isn't isn't that? Direction essentially one of the components of option B? I mean, the the biggest distinguishing factors between option A and option B, as I see them. Is that option A is leaving it to the to the applicants to come up with some. Six, some solution that preserves meaningful and significant portions. Now, granted, that language is in there, but define that. I mean, they could take that any way they want. And come back to us in 90 days or a year and have something that's completely not at all conducive to what. Myself or any one of us board members might construe as preservation. It's it's way, it's really wide open and that's that's the difference between A and B is that B is trying to make it. A little more focused as to what we're looking for the library to come back to us with.
This is Dick Ward. I agree with what. Commissioner Radman just said, and I viewed A as not requiring. It to be a building, in other words, not requiring a an enclosed. 1300 or whatever number of square feet enclosed in a building. Because once you go there, then you have to have whatever else goes with the building, the the. The electric, the utilities, et cetera. So I viewed A as being more. As long as they have the facade and pillars and roof shape. Whether it's part of a pavilion, as was, I think, proposed by the library. That that would be option A, so I'm not.
But that's not, this is Dan Radman, that's not necessarily preservation, that's commemoration.
Well, that's getting into semantic.
Look, I'm going to make a recommendation. Where we should be allowed to all state our own positions once we're through each of the options, so I would. I would like to go back to the option. Let's get through the two options.
Agreed.
I agree.
Getting into a debate, not right for right now. So Lynn, if you can. So everybody, did we agree?
On what?
Did Dick, Art, John, Chris, Claire, did we agree the new?
Not 11 or number 11?
Yes.
I'm happy with it.
Okay, okay, so we can keep going.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Lynn, let's go to, and then to confirm 14 is deleted, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item 16. On 16, I would say, you know, going back to preservation, commem- commem- commemoration. Look, the the challenge here is. You know, maybe people in option A are defining preservation a certain way. People in option B are defining preservation a certain way. The New Canaan Preservation Alliance is defined defining it in a certain way. But I wonder if we do change commemoration to preservation and and, you know, as we all agree, the devil is in the details of how you define preservation.
How about this? This is Commissioner Chris. The commission finds that the New Canaan Library, its applicant, offered oral testimony. On the, at the May 25, 2021 public hearing indicating willingness to pursue. Some manner of preservation of the 1913 and or 1936 buildings. Period. Furthermore, the commission acknowledges the testimony from the first selectmen during the public hearings to support such preservation. I would say movement, drop the word movement, doesn't do anything for preservation. And leave it at that and. So period after, full stop after preservation.
Do we, do we want to list what the first selectman said? Does that, does that have any? Any, you know, appropriateness here?
We could.
I mean, it would, it's it's like signaling out someone who said something. And the fact that it's we're signaling out the first selectman, I I don't know if we want to do that. I would get rid of that last sentence.
I'm okay with that. I I take Commissioner Tescornia's point. The the issue of the first selectman and support is is really. As I recall, was boiled down to, you know, throwing money, extra money at it. If that is not our job, should the commission in its wisdom decide to approve this application some way, shape or form? Then we'll go to town council to decide all that. So that's someone else's job, not ours. I don't see a point in keeping it. I agree with Commissioner Tescornia.
Dick Ward, I I agree.
Okay.
That last sentence entirely drop reference to the first selectman.
And were were all of you okay with John Chris's rephrase of the first sentence?
I am, Dick Ward.
Claire Tescornia, I am too.
I am as well, Art Cassavant.
And so the second sentence, starting with furthermore, furthermore, the commission acknowledges testimony, oh, excuse me, I'm going to do that, sorry, I'm going to do the wrong thing. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, and and by the way, just for the record, the first selectman's testimony is in the record, so.
I I I would.
I'm just making that point.
No, I I you're perfectly correct, Mr. Chairman. I I would agree with Commissioner Tescornia. I I don't think it does anything for us and. I'd rather keep it simple.
Okay. Okay, let's keep moving. Or Lynn, do you have all that?
I do.
Okay, great. So let's keep moving, Lynn, please.
The next, Dick Ward, the next section that's that had the reference to the letter from Patricia Sullivan, is that in or out?
That's finding 17.
It's still, it's still in, Dick.
Okay, well, I I sort of. It almost is like the first selectman comments. Is it, why put it in? I'm not sure it adds anything. I mean, we had lots of letters from lots of people.
This is, this is John Chris. I would agree with Commissioner Ward. I don't see a point in maintaining 17, given sort of where this. These findings are going.
Okay, just a question for Pete. You know, very often we we will use something like this and I'm not necessarily advocating for it, but explaining. Well, you know, we we had a significant view. Of the New Canaan Preservation Alliance represented by. Sullivan, and so very often in the findings, we will address. Key inputs, but what do you think?
Well, the only value that I see it has is that it shows that you considered. Her letter and that there was other evidence that outweighed. It's whatever probative value it had. But John, I think the better option is to just take it out.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Claire Tescornia.
Okay, you got that one?
Yes.
Okay, let's keep going. Okay, reasons for approval, everybody's okay with that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's go to the conditions, Lynn.
This is John Chris. Number one seems to be technical boilerplate, unless I'm misreading it.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah.
Okay, number two is the parking, as is number three. Number four, number five addresses what we talked about during the hearing and the applicant agreed to. On the the Galante recommendations. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, let's keep going, Lynn, please. Okay, item number eight. We're back.
This is Krista Nielsen. I just had a couple of questions, trying to understand exactly what we're saying here. So on eight, and I think nine, we both say that they have 90 days. The first one talks about. Sorry, I'm having to read this on the screen as I'm talking to you guys. Basically presenting preservation options and nine talks about a final concept plan. So are those two different documents, two different things and that we want within the same timeframe, which is both 90 days? From approval of the application?
No, I think there's duplications between the two. I mean, does anybody disagree with me? I don't think it's two different documents.
Okay. So they went back once with options and a second time with a final concept. It would be, they come back once after they've done all of that. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but everybody else, Lynn?
That's the way I wrote it was that they come back once, they. That they brainstorm the options, they come up with a final plan and they return to the commission. If I've misunderstood misunderstood the intent of the commission, please let me know. Maybe it'd be helpful to have the same language, like preservation options and concept planned, just pick one of those. Or preservation options leading to. A concept plan and have have that language in both eight and nine, just so it's the same thing.
I think that makes sense. Everybody okay with that?
All right, so with, this is Dick Ward, with the 90 days. The library has to present. Preservation options. And then in nine, well, apparently the library will be working with the town planner. And perhaps an external advisor if requested by the town planner during those 90 days. So the town planner and the external advisor will have been involved in. The so-called preservation options. Which is supposed to be a final concept plan. So I I think I do agree that perhaps we should be consistent. With the terminology in both eight and nine as to just what. What is being developed within 90 days?
So this is Commissioner Chris. So we have the difference between options, then we have concept plan, which are not the same words. So they can mean very different things. I would agree with that. Also, we have concept plan, which is singular and options, which are plural, so. What are we going with this? Do we want to say, okay, here are three options. We can do this there, we can do that here and the other things, some by the place. Pick one. And the pick one falls on us to pick one, or we could just say we don't like any of them, I guess. But I I would think collapsing these two would maybe appropriate. And I like the 90 days. Longer than that is too long, shorter than that. I I understand there'll probably be some iteration with the town planner. In order to sort of get to the goal line on this one. And 90 days seems to be enough time for some iteration without unduly dragging it out. Which I don't think anybody wants.
So number, this is Dick Ward, number eight could say we'll present a concept plan. And then number nine could be. To create. The concept plan, so that nine then sort of will relate back to eight.
I'm looking at number, number eight and talks about 90 days, they had to come up with a plan and then work diligently over the course of the next year to ensure that. Something is preserved and we're getting sort of down to the detail about roofline and pillars and so forth. Which is seems to be defining what those portions. which it seems to be defining what those portions are. So we seem to be sort of leading the witness a bit, which I'm not sure I would do. I would keep it general and really put the ball in the court of the library in order to come up with options, and I like the idea of options plural. And that it's not just a one-take-or-leave-it, but we may have more than one option, which we could combine or, you know, choose, choose one of them.
And by the way, John, I think where it says next year, I think that's a holdover from the prior draft.
So I would, I thought so, but I wasn't sure exactly.
I think ninety days.
Well, how about this? Under eight, you say ninety days after the date of approval, the New Canaan Library will present options to appropriately preserve, to preserve appropriate portions of the existing library buildings older than nineteen thirty-seven. Period. It's pretty general. And it gives them flexibility to come up with various options. And again, it's options plural, not options singular.
Well, you could then do is if you wanted to collapse eight and nine, you could then add to that, just collapse nine into eight and say, you know, such efforts shall include the town planner, and if desired by the commissioner, town planner, and external advisor, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I would not use the term final concept plan. I would say final options, and I want to be consistent with the words we use.
Like, I think what we can do is we can just lose that and stick with the point that's made in eight.
Okay.
You know what? So from nine, you could just say the library should work with the town planner. There's, you know, the library with it, you know, as part, the library shall work with the town planner, and if desired by the commissioner, town planner, and external advisor hired by the town paid for by the applicant library, period.
This is Claire Tuscornia. I would, John, Chris, I think we keep the, the sentence says, in eight, the New Canaan Library will work diligently over the course, oh, no, no, the New Canaan Library will work diligently to ensure that recognizable and significant portions of those buildings, including facade, pillars, and roofline, will be preserved. I think that's giving them some direction, letting them know what we're looking for. If we leave all that out, we might, you know, we might get, you know, some stones that are into the wall. Like, I think, kind of speaking to Dick's point too, the facade, the pillars, and the roofline is kind of what you think of right now when you think of the library, and if they can incorporate those, that is the direction we want them to go. You think that's too detailed, or do you think we give this action?
In effect, we say facade, that means essentially a number of walls must be preserved. Not a wall, but facade. So in other words, part of the facade, a pillar, two pillars, and I'm not sure what roofline is. Roofline assumes there's a roof that is recognized, it is similar to the one we have now. I think it's probably too much detail.
All right.
It's me. I take your point. I just think it's probably more, I don't answer the question for them necessarily that we're looking to them to present options. Let me, Commissioner Tuscornia, let me run this by the, about this, and also taking into account Chairman Goodman's comments, say, ninety days at the date of approval, the New Canaan Library shall work with the town planner, and if desired by the commission or town planner, an external advisor hired by the town and paid for by the library to create options to preserve appropriate portions of the existing library buildings older than nineteen thirty-seven.
Problem with that is that it says within ninety days the library will work with the town planner. That means they start working within ninety days. They've satisfied the condition. It doesn't mean that they have a concept plan.
Okay, we'll deliver to the commission. Change it to deliver, it's supposed to work with, and deliver by the end of the ninety days. How about this? Okay, ninety days. Within ninety days after, so they can do it sooner if they want to beat the deadline. Within ninety days after the date of approval, the New Canaan Library will, shall, a little stronger, work with the town planner, and if desired by the commissioner, town planner, and external advisor hired by the town and paid for by the library to present options to preserve appropriate portions of the existing library buildings older than nineteen thirty-seven. So it says, they got ninety days to do it. It has to be delivered by the end of ninety days. They have to work with the town planner, and we may require them to hire an outside advisor. That would seem to merge the nut of the two points, eight and nine.
This is Krista Nielsen. I agree. I think eight and nine can be merged to make a simpler statement, and I think what you just presented, Mr. Chris, does that. I did agree with Claire's point that I, even though I don't necessarily want to tie them to it, I think giving them direction, or even just saying, you know, maybe we recommend that the facade and pillars and roofline be considered as part of the thing. I mean, just to give them that direction again, as Claire was saying, not necessarily to require that to happen, but to be clear about what we're looking for as they consider the options.
How about this? This is John Chris again. After the statement, I just, the rewrite I just did, we add a separate sentence and saying appropriate items subject to preservation could include the items you just mentioned, facade and the pillars and roofline. So it's not requiring it, but it's sort of pushing them in a certain direction.
Say that one more time, please, John.
Items for preservation could include, or is it the facade, pillars, and roofline of the pre-nineteen thirty-seven building, buildings.
Where, Krista, is that sufficient?
Yeah. It's Claire Tuscornia, yes.
This is Krista. Generally, yeah, I guess I would still prefer to say that the commission recommends, or it's something a little stronger than items that could be included. I mean, there's a lot of items that could be included. I want it to be clear that these are the things we're recommending that they consider.
I think recommends is a good word. John Goodwin's speaking. John Chris, would you accept that?
Fine.
Okay.
It's a recommendation, it's our requirement. It's pushing them in a direction, which we may end up not going in, but yeah, fair enough.
This is Commissioner Cassavant. I suspect this may be an unhappy comment, but is it reasonable to ask for this within ninety days, given that the issuance date of this could functionally be today, or whatever, two weeks from now, and we are dealing with a time where both the library board and the professionals who might be required to work through such a plan, it might be, we could easily lose thirty days to August.
I have to confess, I'm the one trying to move the meeting along, but ninety days struck me as tight, too. I mean, the the library is going to have to work with various constituents, including ourselves. So, you know, I originally said a year. I completely agree with all the commissioners who said to me a year is way too long. I mean, I'll go with what the commissioners think, but, but I just do worry. I mean, they'll need a few weeks just to digest the whole thing, and, you know.
This is Dan Radman. I think the library and their consultants and the entire library team have been digesting this for the last three months. They've, they've witnessed the deliberations we've had. They've been part of the meetings. They understand our positions. And if they have not been discussing alternative options for the preservation of the life of the nineteen thirteen thirty-six library in whatever format, if they have not been doing that already, they're foolish. They should be doing that already. And I think ninety days is a reasonable amount of time. Let's say we vote on this tonight, and the clock starts ticking. Ninety days is a very reasonable amount of time for an architecture firm to work with a client on an already developed design solution to come back with concept. Again, we're not looking for construction documents. We're looking for concept plans on how they plan to solve the problem. I think ninety days is the right number.
Okay, Dan, I hear you. My, my, my only hesitation is that, you know, it's one thing if there's pretty much a single party that's driving a project. In this case, we have multiple.
John, and but, but that's, that's not our issue. Right? That's for the library to manage and for the stakeholders at the library who are in charge of this project to manage that process and to expedite that process. That's the problem I have with everything we're doing, is we're bending over backwards for the library's application here to somehow get it approved. Whereas if this was any other application, any other applicant, if it was a commercial developer that would have come to us and said, we're tearing down this historic building, we're going to do this, we would have rejected them a long time ago. So I think we're being, as a commission, we're being reasonable in trying to find a solution that we can work with the library, and in turn, the library and their team needs to expedite their response back to us.
It's, it's Kent Turner. Make it under hundred and twenty days.
I like it. Give it another month.
Dick Ward agrees, hundred and twenty days. We have August, which is a dead month, so I think we need to take that into account.
Krista Nielsen, I also agree.
This is Cassavant. There's been time for Thanksgiving.
Or Halloween.
It's between the two.
Yeah.
Let's go with one twenty, and then I suspect, of course, option B, we'll see what gets said there. Perhaps it'll stay at ninety.
John, it's Pete Gelderman. Can I make one technical minor thing? It should be the effective date of approval because the, the site, the special permit can't be effective until the, the regulation and the map change are adopted, and you have to publish notice of an effective date, so it, of those things, so.
So Lynn, you got that?
Yes, that was actually one of my questions. Thanks for answering.
Yeah, and Pete, whatever approval we get, you know, I will try to have the effective date as close to as allowed, you know, by procedures, as close to our date of approval, but, but I, it's a drafting issue, so.
Yeah, yeah. Your only limitation is to make sure that it's, there's a publication of that prior to the effective date.
Yeah, okay, excellent.
Okay, it's Kent Turner, the next item on number ten. The, the way it's written is, I don't, I don't feel it's complete. It doesn't really say what, what's going to happen after the town planner brings back to the commission for feedback on the design. What, what happens next?
Well, I, I thought we were going to say approval. What, what did everybody?
What's the, what's the point of the feedback then? To the commission, I mean.
Roll down, please.
And what I'm saying is, what, what I was thinking when I read this draft was, I would change feedback to approval.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, I was surprised by, I mean, was anybody thinking feedback? We're going to prove this thing. It's the whole point of the conditions.
Yeah. I would concur, Commissioner, Chairman Goodwin, that the outside consultants, if they exist, the town planner and the applicant would work together collaboratively and would present a, the options to this commission, and this commission votes. Yes.
Okay.
On feedback, it's approval.
I'll agree on that. Lynn, you got that?
Yes, change back to approval.
This is Krista Nielsen. Can I just ask another question, and maybe this may be more appropriate when we get to option B, but when I read through these two options, in addition to option B giving more specific choices for preservation of the nineteen thirteen and or nineteen thirty-six buildings, the main other difference I saw was that option A has them come back administratively with an approved special permit, whereas option B has them come back with some sort of amended application process. It, maybe I misunderstood that. I'm just wanting to make clear that we're looking at two different options, two different processes for potentially approving a revised plan that includes these buildings.
So.
Accurate.
James Bash, it's a really good point, Krista, and I think, in my own opinion, as we go through option B, that it might make sense to make that language consistent with what you just elucidated in option A.
Okay, okay, maybe it, they had different processes.
This is Commissioner Chris. I think there may be different processes because we're not sure exactly if option B is chosen, exactly what the applicant, the library is going to come up with. And it may be something that needs blessing from the commission and an entirely new application. We don't know. And so we may be back to square one under option B.
Isn't, doesn't the same, this is Dan Radman, doesn't that same possibility exist now with this newly wordsmithed option A?
I don't think so.
You, but you've just left the door open as to design solutions that the library is going to come back in a hundred and twenty days and need to present it to the commission.
Design solutions, design solutions can be any number of things. Option B is essentially preservation of all the old walls, probably putting up some new walls. And a lot more is involved in option B than option A. That's the difference between the two.
That's true.
Okay, well, let's.
Who knows what's going to happen with option B?
Okay, let's try to wrap up, wrap up option A.
Yes, please.
Still on number ten, also, I would take out the word concept, because I, we agreed, we don't want concept anywhere, right?
Yes.
Correct.
We use the option, we use the word options, as I remember, rather than concept.
Yeah.
Preservation options. So yes, consistent wording throughout.
Okay.
This is, this is Dick Ward. Is it, is it understood just what the process is to bring back the plan to the commission administratively? Is that an understood concept?
Well, I think what's meant, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, administratively means it's brought back to us in a regular meeting mode. Is that what you mean?
Yes, I was, that, that's how I wrote it, that it would come back under a regular meeting.
It's going to come back to the commission for approval. It would not be done as part of a public hearing to be part of, done as part of a regular meeting.
Okay, should we be clear on that, so people don't think there's going to be a whole new public hearing?
Do you have a proposed language?
This is Krista. Maybe after administratively, just say, in, in the regular meeting, through a regular meeting, without public hearing, just to clarify what administratively means.
Do you have any, I'm sorry, Dick, go ahead.
No, I go with that.
Okay. Pete, from a legal term perspective, you okay with that? Pete? Is he on mute? Pete? Lynn, do you see Pete out there?
I see Pete, but he's a black screen right now.
Okay, well, let's just keep going then, hopefully.
Just to clarify, the, the, what, my takeaway from the, from the commissioners' conversations last time was, in option A, you guys were looking to let the library proceed with their larger building, but wanted to see this preservation structure elsewhere on the site, and that this would cut, just the preservation structure would come back administratively. Would cut, the, just the preservation structure would come back administratively.
Correct.
But that's not what the, this is Dan Radman, that's not what. Uh, line ten or condition ten states. Or do we have to be more clear that you're looking only for the concept plan? Associated with the preservation of the nineteen thirteen thirty six, or are you looking for the? Overall concept plan that incorporates the nineteen thirteen thirty six?
It, it's a plan for the nineteen thirty six, so they, they can proceed with. Construction of the library.
So option A would still allow the library to move forward. Immediately. While coming back. Later for a. Design solution for the preservation or commemoration of the old library.
That's correct.
This is, I, I don't, but I mean, I guess, I, that's what I wanted it to say, but when I read this, what I read is that. They have to come back to us prior to the issuances of a zoning permit under number ten, which would, I assume. Needs the building permit, which I would assume means they can't start on anything until they get. The zoning permit, which we're now saying is a hundred and twenty days, at least within a hundred and twenty days.
Well, Lynn, I think Lynn meant to say prior to the, the issuance of a zoning permit for that, for the nineteen thirty six plan.
So, so just bear in mind that every, in, every, um, separate structure on the site requires its own zoning permit and its own. Um, building permit, so whether. They do it at the same time in tandem, or they do it separately, each one gets its own individual building permit and. Each individual building permit being issued, we would issue a separate zoning permit, um, so in reference to the. Structure that they're preserving, they would, they would need to get a, a separate zoning permit, so it wouldn't necessarily hold up the other building permit.
But that's, that's the catch twenty-two of the language here on, in particular on option A is that. We're, we're not making the assumption that they're going to be creating a separate structure. Right? There's language in here about preserving, uh, meaningful portions of, and where that goes, they could, they could attach it to the main building. They could go, you know, um, elsewhere on the site that is, uh, that is somehow connected to the new building. Where it's going to be part of the same permit. We're making assumptions on that.
Shouldn't the language be, instead of the issuance of a zoning permit, be prior to any work? Being conducted on the nineteen thirty six or nineteen thirteen buildings? And that work would include whether it's demolition, relocate, whatever it is. Um, but before they do anything that. Um, would cause. You know, would make. A change moot, you know, that's, that's really when you need to see the plan, you need to see the plan before they. Before they touch the existing historic buildings, correct?
Yes. But, but in, it, what, what I believe is envisioned in option A is they can go ahead. With. The new library. Now, to Dan's point, you know, if they turn around and they say, look, we've decided to, the solution set. Is just design it into. The new library. Then. I guess they come back to us again. But the point is, they can proceed with the new library as presented to the commission.
Then you'll amend the language so that the zoning permit refers specifically. To the nineteen thirteen thirty six buildings. That Lynn referenced.
Yeah, so what should we say there, Pete, to be clear about that?
Well, because prior to the, for, for approval, prior to the issuance. Of a zoning permit. And essentially to, to, um. Conduct. Any work involving the nineteen thirteen nineteen thirty six buildings. You need a zoning permit, Lynn, for demolition, don't you, prior to demolition? Do you need a zoning?
No, w- w- we, we don't, we don't have any opportunity to comment on the demo.
Well, then, prior to, you know, issuance of a zoning permit for any work or. Uh, any demolition.
And in there, um, in the proposed regulation amendment, the library itself asked. That, um, the commission allowed them to keep the, uh. Old existing buildings so they can operate out of it while they're under construction, so, um, the, the old building. In their own presentation, wouldn't be demolished until the day they finish the, the proposed new building. They would have to demolish small portions of their nineteen seventy seven addition, but they. To, to put the building there, but they wouldn't have to, but they wouldn't. According to their own regulation amendment, they wouldn't, uh, demolish that. The nineteen thirteen or the nineteen thirty six building until after they've already constructed their new proposed building.
Then why not just say that the final concept plan will be reviewed by the town planner and shall be brought back to the commission? Administratively for approval prior to the implement, implementation of the plan.
Okay.
Uh, word net instead of brought back administratively, what, why is the adverb to say brought back, returned to the. Brought back to the commission for administrative approval. I assume the term administrative approval has a very specific legal meaning.
Well, it does, and maybe you don't want it in there, but administrative means, actually, it probably doesn't belong there because. You're looking at a certain amount of discretion. To review the concept plan and either approve it or not. So I, I think it should be, shall be brought back to the commission for approval.
Which means, which means. A public hearing.
Not, doesn't necessarily mean a public hearing, it just means that you haven't established, you know, there's, first of all, there's no standard anywhere. Uh, anyway, for that, so it's, it, just because it, you don't have to, you can do things other than administrative stuff outside of a public hearing.
I also think, look, um, the issue of will it be clear to the community that it will not be a public hearing will now be. Very, very clear because it will be reported by the newspapers after we just spent twenty minutes talking about this. I think we have got to worry about it anymore.
Some issues never die, Mr. Chairman.
True, uh, okay, as every, and, and Lynn, concept will come out, so everybody good with Pete's?
This is, I'm fine with what Pete said, I just want to make sure I understand option A before we get. And I don't know if we'll get to the part where we vote tonight, but it sounds like. Because we're willing to off, like, allow the library to go forth with zoning permit and building permit on the new library structure. Prior to figuring out how they're going to preserve necessarily the older building. Or. Does option A basically, I know it doesn't preclude them from incorporating the nineteen thirteen into the new library structure, but are we kind of sealing the fate? That they won't because they're going to want to move ahead with the new thing and then just figure out what to do with the nineteen thirteen later. You know what I'm saying? Like effectively, we're, we're making that happen even though that's not what we're saying in writing. And I just want to understand that so that when we go to vote, I understand which, what I'm thinking about here.
It, it's, it's a bit of a hypothetical question because we can't be in, in their minds, but my guess would be you're probably right.
Okay.
I mean.
Right, so.
Okay. Um, Lynn, let's keep moving down, please. Okay, any issues on this page, commissioners? Okay, I think this is all pretty straightforward. Um, Lynn, please move to the end. Okay, everybody good? Okay, let's go to option B.
Do you want to start, um, at the beginning also with option B?
Yes, I would say, um, you know, the reg amendment. Um. Uh, because there have been changes to that. Wait, wait, no, we did that already.
No, but they, they have, they propose actual changes to the reg amendment theirs.
Yeah, so let's go through the reg amendment.
Okay.
Sorry, I was confusing that with the map change, sorry.
That's okay. Just give me one second to pull that up.
Okay, everybody okay with the first page? Straightforward, page two.
Ironically. Line item two on page two is. Uh, very similar to the language you have in option A.
Well, that's a good thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good? Let's keep moving.
James Bash, Lynn, can you remind us of the language of section two point two? I don't have it up right now.
Um, sorry, I can read it to you guys if you want. It reads historic, historic structures, um, any structure which in the opinion of the commission has a special character or special historic interest. Or value is part of the development, heritage or cultural characteristics of the town, state or nation.
Looks good. James Bash.
Yep. Good here.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
This is, this is Lynn, um, I, I did inadvertently, um, leave out your change to a park. Which, if you guys go with option B, I could add this in there.
Oh, the line about the private park?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely include that change.
Okay, everybody good?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, keep going.
Um, and just, uh, this is Lynn again, just a question for Pete, if we, if the option B is the one that's adopted. And the regulation would also be added to this as well, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, keep going, Lynn.
Um, that's the end.
Right.
You want me to go on to the, to the, uh.
Special permit, yeah.
Permit since there are no changes to the map?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
So, so, so James Bash, just in, in two. Um. Do we want to include additional verbiage that says? Is consistent with the stated main goal of the, of the plan of conservation and development to achieve an appropriate balance of. Conservation and development? I think, I think that's Dan, Ken, or others, I think that's one of the major differentiators and. Our viewpoint from, um, option A is consistency with the. Stated main goal of the P O C D, um, for an appropriate balance between conservation and development.
So, uh, repeat what your proposed change is?
So, I'm just going to think of the verbiage, but, um. Is consistent with the stated main goal of the P O C D to maintain, and I, I care, I'm just doing this off memory. To maintain or, or to, uh. Uh, to achieve a stated balance. Um, or sorry, I'm sorry, to achieve an appropriate balance, I believe, of. Um, conservation, along with the goal, along with other goals of the P O C D, which are listed in A through D.
Uh, it's Kent Turner, uh, and please add, uh, the downtown village design guidelines too.
Agreed, good point.
Um, ju, this is Lynn, just to clarify. Um. Two questions, do you want the downtown village guidelines to be its own number, um? Uh, separate from the P O C D? And then with the language you want me to change in the P O C D, could you just repeat that again? So. Uh, I'm a little lost right now, where are you on it?
Yeah, um, it will take me a bit, but I'm, I, I just have to pull up the P O C D.
To your second, this is Dan Radman, to your second question, Lynn, I think the village district guidelines comment should be a separate line item.
Okay.
Kent, do you agree?
That's fair, Kent Turner.
Okay, so the language should read, um. Is consistent with the overall philosophy of the P O C D. To quote, promote an appropriate balance of conservation. And development in order to enhance community character and improve the overall quality of life.
Okay, repeat that one more time, is consistent with the overall philosophy of the, um, plan of conservation and development?
Yep, to promote an appropriate balance of conservation and development. In order to enhance community character and improve the overall quality of life. And I think, uh, Ken, uh, Ken, if you want to include. Um. The village district guidelines, you know, Dan, myself, um, agree as well.
Good.
Okay, gentlemen, are we all set? Lynn, are we all set?
I believe so. Okay, so you, would you like me to move on to the special permit now?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, keep going, Lynn. Can I stop there? Go back up again, please, Lynn. Okay, stop. Everybody good with this? Straightforward.
Yep.
Let's go to the findings, please, Lynn. Okay, everybody good? Okay.
Kent Turner, on, um, item, item F, the parking areas, um. Don't, let's see, does it mention parking at Saint Aloysius for employees?
That is, um, later, I believe.
Yeah, because it mirrored option A, right, Lynn? And that was in.
This was just going through section eight point two before of the, of the regs, um, the, everything that you'd have to say is. Um, consistent with a special permit per the criteria in the regs.
Okay.
This is Dan Radman, should we amend line item K to be the same language that James just? Um, changed on the. Other document for P O C D compliance?
James Bash, yes, good catch.
This is Dick Ward. I don't mean to back up, but the sixth whereas refers to is the sixth, maybe it's the seventh, the first select, and we took that reference to the first selectman's testimony out of the option A. Would seem that maybe we should take it out of this one.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay.
I had a question on the final level, if you could scroll down a bit on the findings after the whereas is the findings, it was towards the end, sorry. Yes, K, does it enhance open space?
It's in the eye of the beholder, isn't it?
I'm asking a question, that's, it says yes or no question, does it enhance open space?
Well, it's Kent Turner, it most certainly does because of the added landscaping.
That's not open space, that's trees and open space.
That's part of open space.
So, it's James Bash, so the Village Green, I believe, is 21,700 square feet. Even though preservation of the 1913 and/or 1936 buildings is incorporated into the option, it still leaves a significant amount of town green and open space. So, you know, I would argue strongly it does.
And this is Dan Radman, and I would also follow that with the optionality that we provided in terms of the, the different solutions for the preservation. They could still do it in such a way where they maintain a town green. The word enhances implies more.
Yeah, but, but maybe I misunderstood the point, James Bash, it's certainly more than what's than what we currently have.
How?
We're, because we're not debating the, whether or not the library application goes through. So, this, this, if there is acceptance of option B, we are certainly going to have a larger town green and open space. In my mind, then, then what we do currently under two of the, two of the options that are given under B. So, I don't think we need to slice and dice it. One of the options is just to include the 1913 building in C2, or move it, that would enhance open space. Another option is to eliminate the 1936 building, that would enhance open space versus the status quo. So, I don't think we need to further slice and dice it.
I just don't see how it enhances it, but.
If it enh, okay, my, my interpretation of, or my definition of enhances means grows.
Enhance, to me, means more, not more, it's certainly a material improvement of the open space that exists. It's unclear to me how that's going to occur here, but I'll let it pass.
Okay, let's go to the next page. So, Kent, there's the 26 parking spaces in number three.
Great, thanks.
Okay, keep scrolling, please, Lynn. Stop, please, stop. Okay, everybody good? Keep going, Lynn. Everybody good?
Okay, so, this is Dan Radman, I just wanted to make a point of some of the language you've added in here, we, you may have seen it before, we may have talked about it during the meetings, but I did want to highlight it because there was there was a phrase in option A where if the structures were found to be historic, the 1913 and 36 library, that was something we struck from this option B specifically because of the history associated with the, the library and the previous approvals, specifically P and Z approvals and zoning board of appeal approvals, where there was a finding in 1977, this is item number 11 on option B in the findings, that the ZBA specifically noted in its approval that the 1913-36 buildings were considered historic. And that was the reason for their various conditions on the development at that time in terms of height and scale and engagement of the existing buildings. Just wanted to make that, highlight that for the rest of the commission members.
Okay.
I have a question on point 10, it's John Chris. I'm reading this, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that there are historic structures that define in section 2.2 of the new Canadian zoning regulations on the site that predate 1937 and shall be preserved, so shall is quite a strong word, I assume that was chosen deliberately, shall be preserved, so if I read this strictly, that any structure, which is a man-made item of some sort, that is predating 1937 regardless of size, dimensions, and so forth, must be preserved. That's what it says.
Correct.
So, in other words, if there is some portion of a wall that's, you know, half a foot wide, that's buried in another wall, and it's in term, that's a 1936 half-foot wall remnant, that has to be preserved, that's what this says.
Correct. Okay. Define preservation.
So, this means, basically, it's a termination of age of anything, and anything pre-37 is preserved, period.
From this site, correct.
Lynn, did you have a comment to make?
I, I do, I just want to interrupt for a second. To all the members of the public that are on the call, if you could please refrain from commenting in the Q and A, it is completely appropriate, this is a public meeting, and there's no public comment taken. And it's, it's inappropriate, so if you could stop using the Q and A, we can't shut it down at this point, that's the only way we have to speak to you if something goes wrong. So, like, if you lose the connection or there's a computer failure or something, so we left it open for that purpose. So, please stop commenting.
Of course, commissioners, as you all know, you are not looking at the Q and A anyway, let's keep going, Lynn.
Thank you, sorry.
Sure. Okay. Keep going.
Sorry.
Okay, this is all the same, so keep going, please.
So, on the right there on the screen, item number seven, regarding the center school parking lot. As everyone's aware, the Galante report from last year was performed during COVID at, at the high, the lowest amount of usage of center school parking lot and some pretty good assumptions were made in terms of how the how the center school parking lot is going to be used once the library is built. Again, as everyone knows, this town historically has had significant issues with parking over the years in the downtown area, and center school parking lot was always a good buffer to that parking problem. We are now eliminating all of the parking on the library lot proper and taking 76 parking spots away from the center school lot and giving it to the library for their usage, so effectively eliminating 76 parking spots from the gross town public parking amount. With that said, I think the modifications that were recommended, the evaluation to be completed once the library is open, the modifications that would be required would need to be completed within 24 months after the certificate of occupancy is issued by the library. One thing that is me, is not mentioned in here. Lynn, wasn't there a sentence in here about the maybe I'm missing it, the, the review of the parking situation within a certain amount of time? Was that in the previous draft?
The, you, do you mean review of that they're going to submit a, a traffic impact analysis a year after CO?
Yeah, where does it say that? Am I missing?
It's in number six, right here.
Yep.
But that's part of the MOU as well.
Yep. So, the number seven, we were just adding some more definitive language in there about when those recommended changes, if there are any, would be implemented, because there was previously no timeframe for getting that done.
Okay.
I have no issues with that, I think at some point we got a cold time on it.
So, just bear in mind that your timeframe also has to include, because it's improvements to a town-owned property, it ends up going through town council and several other boards and commissions as well.
Okay, keep going, Lynn.
John, I'm sorry, this is Claire Tiscornia. We just skipped over this, I apologize. Up under findings, I believe, yeah, findings. Number 12, there's a number one after that. And it's the Planning and Zoning Commission believes incorporation of the 1913-36 buildings institute into the new library design would have been the preferred option. And we didn't agree to that, we also took that out of option A.
I thought that option, that was the language that Arthur Kosova had put together and preferred was the term used.
We never voted on it, and I don't think it's appropriate to say that the entire commission believes that would have been the preferred option.
I would agree with Commissioner Tiscornia. Given the vibe of the, of option B, I don't even think it's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we took it out of A, we should take it out of B too.
What I'm saying is you didn't take it out of A.
Yes, we did.
It's, it's Kent Turner, I thought Pete had clarified that.
It was deleted from option A, it was also finding 14, and then we, then there was an edit to option to finding eight.
It was deleted in option A, right?
Yes, it was deleted in option A.
Okay, well, generally, we've deferred to those behind the respective options, so James, Dan, you've been the most vocal on this, what say you?
Well, if, I mean, honestly, if we're going to take in findings number 12, take the word preferred or take that whole item out of there, we're basically throwing the baby out with the bathwater and completely ignoring the POCD and the, and the Village District Guidelines that only, you know, four of the members on this commission were involved with back in 2010 and 2014, and we worked very hard to establish those. And now we're ignoring them. So, that's fine if you want to strike it from option A, but I believe option B needs to have that in there, because that is the whole tenor of this, of this option, is the establishment of a preference for the preservation of the library.
So, we're getting back down to some commissioners feel this way.
That is, that is correct.
That's right.
Which, you can, you can rephrase it. You don't really want to have that in our options, you, you don't want to say, you want to present a united front. I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing that some of the commission feel this way, I just am arguing that I don't think it's appropriate to say that the entire commission believe that the buildings institute would have been the preferred option.
It's, it's Kent Turner. It's Kent Turner, Claire, I thought that we all agreed that we, we would just say commission and not all commissioners. Maybe I misunderstood that.
No, Kent, just, my only argument is that we never agreed to that. So, I don't think it should be in you know, the, the resolution.
I'm okay with striking that. James Bash.
I I don't know what to say.
It's my own view is that I don't want to speak for the whole body of the commission. And, you know, certainly there isn't consensus on that language.
It's Kent Turner. You know, that's understandable. And I respect your point of view. But there are two options, and they are different, and they have to so-state the differences. And without having, you know, the reference to the commission and that, you know, this thought process, this decision, this recommendation was made, we do not have two options.
Or Kent, maybe if you want to just change the language, saying the Planning and Zoning Commission believes incorporation of the buildings institute into the new library design will be the preferred option. Because would have been the preferred, preferred option refers to us talking about it and agreeing on it in the past, whereas in option B, I believe you want to keep these buildings institute, so you can write, it will be the preferred option.
I like that, Claire, I think.
It's Kent Turner, I agree with that, that's
All right.
Well said.
Fine with me.
Lynn, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's keep moving. Okay, everybody good? Keep going.
Yep, we were here already.
Yeah, exactly. It's like, wait a minute. Okay.
So, to explain conclusion 10 or condition 10, again, the, the tenor of option B is preservation of the 13 and/or the 36 buildings. And what we try to do here is provide language in very clear direction to the library as to what we define, not only define as the 13 and 36 library size of buildings and their facades, but also the optionality on either keeping them in situ or relocating them on-site and keeping them as standalone or tying them into the new building, giving them that optionality that would be a a substantial and meaningful level of preservation of these buildings rather than a commemoration of a portion of the building. That's as best as I can describe what the goal of condition 10 and option B as a whole is. That's a big distinguishing factor between A and B. I, there's a lot of similarities between A and B. But the two biggest differences are the scope and conditions of what preservation is considered, not just commemoration. And then the other one is the other condition, which I don't actually know if it got captured in here, was the timeline for approval and, and coming back to us with the September 30th date for the amended application, and that's, that's to be debated, the actual language there, I would turn to. turn to Pete for uh recommendation on this.
Yeah, Dan, and that that is John Goodwin, that is in there. Um. But are you effectively saying that the library has to come back to us with a um new proposal?
Well, I I'm not sure how to say it legally, and and again, that's why I defer to Pete on this, but what I'm saying is that we want them to come back to us with a either a single or multiple, preferably multiple options on how they could preserve the library. And do it before their zoning permit is issued. I like the, I like the milestone of the zoning permit approval because as Krista mentioned, it is a sequence, right? Zoning approval will be, will come before building department and health and everything else before they can put a shovel in the ground. And I think to condition the zoning approval on making sure they come back to us with a viable solution, just like you did in option A is the right way to do it. The difference being in option A, you're looking for a solution and you're only holding the zoning approval of what the standalone ancillary relic of the preservation of the library is. I'm saying here that we hold on the zoning permit approval for the project as a whole. We as a commission are our charge as a commission is to make sure that the applicants that come before us, whether it be the library or anyone else, have a complete, thorough and acceptable application. And in the cases like this one, where there is significant holes in the application as to what's acceptable and what's not. We as a commission should hold the applicant accountable to come back to us with a viable solution before we give them full approval. That's how it's done on every other project.
Good.
And this is Krista Nielsen, um, just I I asked this question previously, but now that we're here um on option B, I want to ask it again. Because I just want to understand, uh, an option A, we said, and it, well, I don't know if he took the word out administrative approval, but that they would come back to the commission for some sort of approval of their preservation options. Here we're saying amended application.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I I think, I think that that sentence has to be modified. As I mentioned, I do like the language in option A about coming back to us for administrative approval. The difference being it's not just administrative approval to proceed with a zoning permit for the uh nineteen thirteen or thirty-six library alone, which is what option A is. I'm saying it's for approval for the zoning permit for the project as a whole.
Okay, yeah, I was just a little uh unsure about the term amended application because to me that sounds like we're s- sort of kicking off a new special permit process, which.
It it, this is John Chris, it very much sounds like that to me. I would agree with um the concerns Commissioner Nielsen is is stating or seems to be stating is that we we don't know exactly what the library is going to come back with. Uh, in including alterations to the whole rest of the site, which could very well require a special permit or a waiver or something else, and may even go to Z B A. If the issue is that, well, I have this historic, was deemed to be an historic structure on my property that creates challenges for me uh in construction in another building on the same site. And therefore I need a waiver from the zoning board appeals. I could see how they could go that direction too. Um, but this could very well end up with a brand new application and we are back to square one.
It's uh, it's Kent Turner, and that is not what we want to happen. So we've got to wordsmith this to prevent that.
I'm not sure we can dodge that bullet.
Well, let's hear what Pete Gelderman has to say.
Uh, well, my initial thought is that um, I'm not sure what the difference between the amended application and the final concept plan is intended to be. Um, it almost sounds like they're two different things because in paragraph ten, it talks about the amended application and paragraph twelve, it talks about final concept plan. I'm, I'm assuming that the the, it's the final concept plan that has to be brought back to the commission for approval. That's the same language we used in in option A. We didn't talk about administrative, we took that out. Be brought back to the commission for approval prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the new library. So the difference there, it would be consistent with A, except that there's no zoning permit that's going to be issued for the new library until that concept plan is approved by the commission.
Correct.
And so I think that the language about an amended application in ten is unnecessary.
Correct, and that's what I was referring to. This is Dan Radman, that's what I was referring to earlier. I think that sentence was just, i- it was a premature draft of what we were getting at, and to be consistent, that sentence should just be changed to whether we want to call it concept plan or something else, that the revise, let's call it revised concept plan should be submitted to planning and zoning no later than September thirtieth. That, at the time, that was the the ninety day window, but now we're beyond that. So we can amend it to say within a ninety day from approval. Or a hundred twenty days, whatever the commission feels is best there. I still think ninety days is plenty of time.
So is there a difference between the amended concept plan and the final concept plan?
No, uh, look, um, I'm saying strike the word amended application or amended con, whatever, the amendment out of there.
Right.
Let's keep it consistent to say final concept.
Okay, right. Then you can get rid of twelve. And you can just take the language that's in twelve and put it.
At the end of ten.
At the end of ten.
Correct.
I have a question for Attorney Gelderman. I, it's unclear to me how changes of this substance, these are not minor tweaks, these are significant changes to a building plan. Uh, can be accomplished without somehow an application inviting public comment to this commission occurs. I don't see how we don't do that.
Well, these are conditions of an approval. So. Um, it's a little different than modifying the plan. It's a condition of an approval. Uh, obviously. I'll leave it to the commission to determine if these types of of um conditions were discussed in the course of the public hearing. But the commission has some latitude to condition its approval, provided that the the um conditions are consistent with the regulations. Again, this may require a tweak to the proposed regulation as well, but um um. But that's the limit of the, you know, the commission can uh condition its approval as long as the 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 condition is authorized.
Well, let's say, for instance, the library says, okay, we're going to do a re-engulfment of the uh older library, which is essentially what we have now, it's an engulfment. Uh, and uh, as part of the redesign of the entire building, uh, in order to accomplish this, we're going to have a six-story building as opposed to what we originally presented. Uh.
Yeah, I mean, there's a site plan that's associated with this as well.
So it'll bring back a a site plan, the library then is an applicant, brings back a site plan with a six-story building and a re-engulfment of the older sections of the library as part of that uh new design. I I would have to believe such a thing would require an an open public meeting of some sort by this commission. Well, we just couldn't bless it.
No, first of all, in that hypothetical, John, you'd have a uh, remember, to the extent that an overlay zone does not specifically amend the provisions of the underlying zone. The provisions of the underlying zone continue to apply. An overlay zone goes on top of an existing zoning district, so only the, only the changes that are specifically set forth in the overlay zone regulation um would supersede any of the underlying zoning requirements. So I I don't know what the, you know, off the top of my head, what the underlying zoning requirements are. Presumably, six stories would not be consistent with the underlying zone. So they'd have to, anything that they would propose would have to be consistent with the overlay zone, and to the extent the overlay zone doesn't change the underlying zone, has to be consistent with the underlying zone, so um. So and and this approval is also a site plan approval, so they have to um, if they're going to amend the site plan, they have to come back to the to the commission to get the site plan amended. That, that's an administrative process. Meaning it can be done without a public hearing. If if all that's happening is a change to the site plan. The site plans, remember this, and you know this, the site plan is different than the special permit. The special permit allows a use, site plan specifically talks about how the property will be developed to accommodate that use. So site plan standards are usually strictly administrative. I know that New Canaan has some language in its regulations that deal with public health, safety and welfare when it comes to site plan um, standards, but typically that's more appropriate in a special permit context rather than a site plan. Hope I'm not being too obtuse here.
Oh, thank you. Further on this, um, I guess, sorry, it's a grammatical nit, um, it's does not have an apostrophe and A, B, C and D. It's a possessive, not a contraction, um. But also on on C and D. Um, if I understand, if I made my dysreadias in its uh for demo, take C, the incorporation of the approximately twenty-seven and square foot nineteen thirteen building, including historic facades on east and north elevation, along with original roof lines in its original footprint, I I assume they mean or relocated to a different location on the site. The word or is not there.
Hmm.
So that's a missing word, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, um. As a, as a, as a practical matter, I just wonder on C and D trying to move in its entirety, this uh older building, parts of what are 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 really not intact, and there may be, as we've seen in the in the uh drawings recently, it's, you know, pillars and pieces. Um, I, so I'm, I'm, as a practical matter, C and D don't really seem to be options, and it's really either A or B.
This is Dan Radman. John, uh, you keep saying that and repeating that and and pushing that narrative, but you you have to defer to the consultant that was brought on board that has already put together a report attesting to the viability and the the structural integrity and the relative completeness of the building that's there. The fact that you don't see stone on a wall on the west or south facade is not, does not mean the wall's not there. It means it's been modified and it's been covered over by sheet rock. So it's there as many times as you want to repeat it, the existing structure is there and is salvageable. And it's been defined, it's been determined by experts that it can be salvaged. I don't know if you have a degree in preservation or architecture, but please, that's what they, that's what they provided to us. We have to go.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, let's keep moving, please. Lynn.
Um, this is Claire Tiscornia, I have a quick question. Um, so anything other than incident two or moving the entire structure with on, within the property is not acceptable to you, right? That's what I'm getting reading this.
Correct, we don't.
You don't want like sods or?
No, we don't want for that, that's not preservation, right? Again, that that goes to commemoration. And we're trying to come up with a viable solution, giving them the optionality on how to create a preservation of the historic library. Putting a, putting a a component of facade up against the memorial on the other side of the site or doing paving stones or any of the other things that were discussed and are part of public record for what the library has already suggested are not viable preservation solutions. Um, now, I shouldn't say viable, I should say acceptable.
Yeah, i- i- I mean, James Bash, to that point, if people can envision even the most kind of developed um, idea from the library about what preservation would entail. Does if you try to envision what that might look like, um. Does that, to me, it just, it strikes me as a token gesture and misplaced. Um, it's very hard for me to think of a slice of the facade being incorporated anywhere into the lot and not looking um, again, like a piecemeal token gesture. It it, I I, what I still haven't heard yet is any kind of substantive backup as to why uh, option A or, you know, again, a slice of a building, we'll see what it is conformed with um, the stated main goal, the P O C D in the village district guidelines. And in my viewpoint on this has is different as a commissioner than it would be as it would be as a resident. Um. Where we have to, you know, follow those guidelines. And, uh, you know, I also recognize that as I think, I think it's a, it's an important point and it's a fair one to raise. In terms of the feedback we have gotten, there was a petition for the president, for the uh, the the library and the town green that did get significantly more um petition votes or letters, uh, signatures, I should say, than preservation of the nineteen thirteen library. However, it did combine town and the green um in that petition. And and I just think there's a very significant difference between the way that a resident will look at this and the way that commissioners have to look at this, and I truly don't understand, I haven't heard a cogent argument for it yet. How option A fits in with the stated main goal of the P O C D and the village district guidelines. I'd love to hear it, though.
Agreed.
We'll talk about it, we'll talk about it. Let's keep going. Okay, everybody good, keep going, Lynn. Okay, Lynn, we've gone through everything, right?
We have just one point on on option B. I inadvertently left off, I added a a condition to option A that required the submission of a landscape maintenance plan, um, and I was intending to add it to option B, but that's entirely up to the commission.
I would be in favor of that.
Agreed.
Okay, um. I think we've covered everything. Um, we'll talk, we'll talk more about um reasons for approval or denial. Um, but starting with um. I will read it. Item number one, discussion and consideration of the request of Edward O'Handlin Robinson's call, L O P, authorized agent for the New Canaan Library, Inc., owners along with its affiliates of properties located at one fifty-one Main Street, sixty-four Maple Street and forty-four, forty-eight and fifty-six South Avenue to amend the zoning regulations dated June sixteen, two thousand seven, revised August sixteen, two thousand nineteen. To add section five point one quasi-public library overlay zone and proposed amendments to section two point two of the New Canaan zoning regulations. To start with option, either option, do I have an approval for denial of either option?
Well, to avoid a continuing silence, uh, this is Dick Ward. I will uh move to approve option A as modified by the discussion this evening.
A second, Matt.
And the reasons which are largely uh stated uh in the resolution itself. But I guess I take a little bit of an issue with some of the comments this evening that option A is not consistent with the P O C D in the sense that it's not a preservation. But I, I guess I don't agree uh, that if you have a substantial portion, particularly the facade and pillars and sort of roof line. Uh, even if it's just the front portion. That's, that's sort of the historic image that the town has adopted and has shown on many of its own publications. And I would think that it could be considered a preservation, even though it's not the entire building. Option B seems to require the preservation of the entire building and entire footprint. So that's, that's sort of my comment in support of option A.
Other commissioners, other thoughts?
Yeah, just, you know, James Bash. The most significant offer that we heard from the library regarding, if you want to call it commemoration or some level of preservation is roughly 200 square feet. And you're right, Dick, it encompassed that front facade in portico. But we're talking about 200 square feet of a 3,600 square feet building or sorry, 3,400 square foot, square foot building. I, I don't think you know, 1/17th of a structure is in my mind, even under kind of more reasonable definitions of preservation would suffice.
Anybody else?
This is Commissioner John Cris. I would concur with my colleague Commissioner Ward and his comments. When we think of conservation development, it's not conservation, development are necessarily 50/50. You may have a building, let's take the glass house and its surrounding area, which are sort of integrated whole. And I'm not sure how you can chop that up frankly, and preserving it in, in total in C two was really the original design concept for Mr. Johnson and you know, there, uh, you know, a preservation issue would, would seem to be preeminent. And I think this is what the National Trust has, has said and its donors have said, and I think this commission too, and the various actions we've taken in order to provide us the best support we can within the context of taking care of neighbors. That that building be preserved and the people get to enjoy it in an appropriate way. In some cases, development issues may take precedence over preservation and preservation are important, but is not necessarily the dominating issue. I think as the chairman has mentioned in the past, is that you're looking at both of them and it's achieving an appropriate balance. An appropriate balance is not necessarily a 50/50 balance. It could be a 60/40 or 55/50 or a 70/30, but an appropriate balance. And I think that the option A provides an appropriate balance. In particular, when we think about the library and the, the journey it's been on into, to the point we are now, the it would be hard pressed to find anybody in town. Probably not to use of all the fingers and the two hands counting the number of people in town who think a new library is a bad idea. I was particularly moved again by the video of the schoolchildren in town. Again, I can't remember the last time or the first time schoolchildren have appeared before this commission. I would encourage them to do so in the future. Uh, and they were quite adamant that, you know, this is something that's very important to their development. And I found that really quite moving and very important. And I think that's, you know, part of what you know, welfare of the town is, which is really what it boils down to. And I think in our plan of conservation development is promoting the general welfare of the town of New Canaan today and the future. And I think this new library will be a keystone in that development, providing uh, education and a social opportunities for every member of the town uh, that I think will be a major plus for us. And I think option A strikes an appropriate balance of the various factors we consider of development and of conservation. And so I would support option A.
So, James Bash, so, so wasn't it within option A, and I forget the language that, that was included. What did we talk about and did we settle on language in option A that talked about a preferred option of preservation of the 1913, 1913, 1936 building by the commission? If in fact we did, I believe we did, but I could be wrong.
I think we landed on recommendation, sorry, that we recommend.
Okay, a, a recommendation. So if the recommendation is for the preservation of that structure, how does that foot with having 1/17th of the structure left? And again, that's not even incorporating the 1936 building that would be demolished as well. It's around 700, 800 square feet. How was 1/17th a slice of something that maybe it butts a gas station? In any way, has that in accordance with what the language that we wrote in option A?
Other comments? Typically, typically what we do here is we give our reasons for approval or denial. That's what we do at this point in our deliberations.
Can I, can I make one comment, Mr. Chairman, in response to Commissioner Bash? I get his point. However, one has to keep in mind that the existing, if you preserve the entire building, the 2,700 square feet or 3,600, whichever number you're using, that square footage includes, of course, the central open area. It's not just four walls. And it's a little bit perhaps misleading to try to compare 2,700 square feet with 200 square feet. If you're, the preservation is going to be just of a facade, say a front wall and some pillars and it'll look the look of the, the library. Not, not the depth.
Yeah, James Bash, I, I think it's a really fair point, Dick, but you know, with that said, you know, when I went over the possibility just to try to get a if there's any sort of consensus or, or give on a more meaningful preservation than a slice of the building or just, you know, the facade of the building, say roughly 200 square feet. Cause that's just what, within the public record. Um, and brought up the idea of preservation and within option A of a 1,300 square foot structure. Um, and potentially an enclosed structure that encompassed the salon room and the office. And you do have, you know, it incorporates the most historic parts of the exterior envelope that people again link to a sense of character and place of the town, at least many do, some don't definitely. It didn't seem like there was any sort of commitment to that, that more, that fuller level of preservation. And so what, what my concern is in option A is it leaves the door open so much to what the library is going to come back with. Maybe they come back with something that's a greater piece of commemoration than a 200 square foot structure. Maybe they don't. You know, if they don't and it's not acceptable to the commissioners, then we're kind of back to square one. And what I would have hoped the commissioners would have done at a minimum is say then, well, at least the salon room in the office, that 1,300 square feet should be preserved. But I don't know that we're there yet. Um, I, I, I don't know that we'll ever be there yet. Um, be there, I should say. So it's a real concern to me, Dick, that I think what we're, there's a very, very good chance that what we're going to be left with is you know, in something that is not aesthetic at all. It's, it looks like a token gesture and it looks misplaced. It's kind of a piecemeal form of preservation, which is why I would prefer between those two options, option B.
Anybody else?
This is Dan Radman. Again, I, I completely agree with what James has stated. I have to admit, when we were going through option A, I, I really felt like there was a glimmer of light there that there, they were really reading very similarly to our intent of option B. I think we all really want the same thing. We've all been kind of put in, been put in this really awkward position of trying to craft some sort of a viable approval with all these conditions when, I mean, we've mentioned this in the past, when it, it had the preservation of the 1913 or 36 library been part of the or remained part of the library scheme because apparently it was at some point. Um, we wouldn't be struggling with this right now. I think that I'm not in support of A just because of the same reasons that James stated, which is it doesn't have enough teeth. Right? You're, we, we've gone through this on other applications as a commission where we've given conditional approval, but they didn't, they didn't need to come back to the, the commission for a review. Uh, they only had to do it administratively and we never got to see this final product. And it, it leaves the door wide open for various levels of interpretation that some of us on the commission might have an issue with. You know, if, if the, if the library is giving their permit to go ahead with the main building now and option A is approved, they could very easily come back in 120 days with three options, none of which will be acceptable to the commission. Very possibly. Because they don't conform to what all us on the commission may have an image in our heads as to what preservation means to us. We're not going to make everyone happy, but there's a chance that no one will be happy. And we have no leverage at that point. What do we do then? They're already building the building they wanted to build and they have no way of incorporating the existing library, the 1913, 36 library. And they're not willing to go that route anyway. So we have no leverage as to an approval into having them do something substantial and meaningful. I'm using the words from option A. Whereas option B is, has more teeth to it.
Anybody else?
Um, I would, I'm obviously voting for option A. I'm, it, it's a little annoying when everyone keeps saying that option A has no teeth. I mean, we are asking them to go back and take a look at it. And I do believe, I do have faith that the library will do that. Whereas I think option B is all teeth. Option B says you need to keep this in situ or that's it. And it needs to be in situ or just move somewhere else onto the property. I, I mean, I really think we need to be a little more flexible with this. I don't, I don't think it's one way or no way. I think we need to be able to have faith in the library, believe that they'll come back with something that is commemorative, which is not a bad word, by the way. Everyone keeps saying it's not preservation. Well, it's commemorative. It's okay. And also for the P O C D, there are sections of the P O C D that talk about enhancing the downtown experience, enhancing community facilities and services. And that's what this does too. So you can look at it with the P O C D from a bunch of different angles. So for that reason, I think I'm going to have faith in the library. I think they'll come back in 120 days with something we'll be able to approve. So I'll be approving option A.
So James Bash, but the, this, the stated philosophy of the P O C D is to promote an appropriate balance of preservation or conservation, as you say, in development. And, you know, I hope commissioners before they decide how to vote, really think about what an appropriate balance means in the intent of that language. I, you know, there was, there was four commissioners, I guess, that, that came up with the P O C D, the latest version in 2014. So maybe, maybe you could give us some feedback as to what those words actually meant, as it would be physically manifested in the type of application that we have now. Um, what is an appropriate balance?
Okay, anybody else?
It's Art Cassavant. I just want to go on record as saying that along with Claire, I am quite hopeful that the library will come back with a substantive uh, preservation option, but I do believe that the balance of development requirement suggested in A is appropriate and consistent with the P O C D.
Anybody else?
I guess I'll speak up. This is Krista Nielsen. Though you all know how I feel about the text amendment and I won't continue to reiterate my issues there. I probably will have to vote yes on it because I can see this is going to be a very split vote. So I'm not going to make my stand on this, but I hope in the future we will consider some changes to our process in terms of how we consider text amendments and site specific special permits. Um, you know, I'm really torn on this. I see good things in both options here. I guess ultimately it's going to come down to the fact that I'm okay with them, the library just keeping the 1913 facade in some form or fashion, hopefully in a meaningful way, in my opinion, hopefully integrated into the new building design. I know option A is not going to guarantee that and that scares me, but I also I'm not sure that I feel like I can commit to option B requiring, requiring them to keep that entire building either in situ or elsewhere on site. Um, so I'm probably going to go with option A.
Anybody else? Okay. Thoughts at my end is I'm, I'm going to vote for option A, but I thank Dan and James for the work they've done. They've actually put together and advanced some very, very good ideas, which I think the library should take into consideration. I think that, you know, we've, we've slipped into, you know, a little bit of mudslinging. And, you know, I think saying that the library is going to throw up a facade against a gas station. I, I just don't think that's fair. I think that we have seen through all of these deliberations. I think we've seen huge progress. Um, I think we've seen progress on the part of the library and, and Dan, I get your point. It shouldn't be our problem, but you know, I, I think the library and, you know, how it happened. I'm not going to go there, but you know, I think they were blindsided by some of the feedback that's happened here. Now, as I think about option A versus option B, my concern with option B is we're, we're just too aggressive and foisting upon them for options. And so where I'm coming out is to give them, is to take the risk, to give them the opportunity to, to be creative, as, as many of you have pointed out, you know, it's a creative team over there. And I think from where we started, option A to where it is now, um, I think option A does have very significant teeth. Now, is it 120 days from now and we get options that we don't like? Yeah, I'm, I'm worried about that. But I, you know, I think, you know, the, 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 the library team, it's a good team. It's a strong team. You know, and they're not trying to pull any fast ones on anyone. And so, you know, that's where I would come out. Now, talking about the criteria for approval of the reg amendment, you know, vis a vis the plan of conservation and development is, you know, and, and look, the ideally in the P O C D, we achieve both preservation and development. That would have, that would be the best of all worlds. In, in terms of making this decision, we are supposed to take into consideration the P O C D. So it talks about different things, appropriate balance of conservation and development to enhance community character and improve quality of life. Well, that means a new library. And, and I, I think we can get there with a significant degree of conservation. It, you know, it also talks about, you know, achieving, we're not required to preserve everything. And then I think one of the challenges with the 1913 library is it's, it's not all there. We can debate whether it's two walls or three walls or a roof. Um, you know, the P O C does talk about preserving historic resources and protecting the physical character. So if we end up with a mediocre plan, then that's clearly a negative. The P O C D talks about supporting downtown. This is critical to downtown. We have a broken library right now. It talks about enhancing livability, providing appropriate facilities. So, you know, part of what I'm going through here is, yeah, we, we have risks on the conservation side, but you can go through the P O C D. And using option A, you can tick off, you know, the bulk of what the P O C D is trying to achieve, sustainability and resiliency. You know, this is where we're putting into place a new building, depending on how you define sustainability. It's a great design. We, the planning zoning, we, we have had the track record of, you know, promoting community involvement. That's another piece of the. We, the planning zoning, we, we have had the track record of, you know, promoting community involvement. That's another piece of the P O C D. Rationalizing parking, I ha, and, and we, we've developed a difference of view in parking here. I happen to feel. And, and part of the way I thought about this is, I'm not a parking expert, but we ended up bringing in Mr. Galante and his firm. And so we effectively brought in parking experts. And we also know parking's going to change, you know, as we go forward. And as I have publicly said on the record, you know, a year ago, when the library came and said they can't do underground parking, I was, I was unhappy and I was a little suspicious. But, you know, I actually think we could end up with a good parking solution depending upon what happens with parking. You know, in, in a pre-COVID environment. Supports pedestrian movement. You, you can make an argument, the green is positive for pedestrian movement. I do acknowledge, you know, there is noise around Cherry Street, but, but I think it's a net improvement to that area. Page 49 of the P O C D, maintain the library as an anchor use. It's a key anchor to the town. Page 54, as a community facility. What we're trying to do here is protect public health, mental health, a strong, a strong library. Also property values, by the way. So if I'm living, if I have a store across the street on Main Street, I'm ecstatic that there's going to be a new parking, a, a new, a new library there. So I, I think it, 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 you know, we're, we're, we're not that far apart in what we're trying to achieve. It's really the tactics of how we're trying to achieve it. And, and I just, I, I, I do think that, you know, is it 100% in concert with the P O C D? No, it's not. But most of our decisions are not 100% in concert with the P O C D. It, it's, it's a very, very high bar.
So.
This is Commissioner John Cris, Mr. Chairman. I would echo your, your commentary. If there are any doubts on the part of anyone in this commission that there's community involvement, I think those doubts have been erased through this particular application. There's been overwhelming community involvement, and I think much more, I'll say it, much more than I thought there was going to be. I thought it would be a lot. This was a lot more than a lot. And I think it surprised those on both sides of this issue really how involved people were with this matter. Also, I, I, I think those who are advocating for option B have done a, a service, in particular, sending a message to the libraries, I hope this commission is, that there is a desire for a, a, a real action on, on their part under option A. And some type of, I'll say it, you know, half-baked response is, is not going to fly. And I think I, if they're not getting that message, they really ought to get that message because I think that's the message this commission is, is about to send. And that something serious should be done. Exactly how to define all those terms. I, I welcome the innovation from the library board and staff and their advisors, and I think would have something very interesting and creative. I certainly hope so. But the importance of, of a new library for the health and welfare of this town that, and I think we all in the past year and change have a great, greater appreciation of exactly what health and welfare are all about. And I, I, I think moving forward with option A and a new library would be really, to my mind, very much in the best long-term interest of the people of New Canaan.
So, so James Bash, so just, just to pick up on John's point on, on community involvement, we've obviously had a ton of it. It's, it's surprised me too in terms of the the level of degree. We've seen a lot of thoughtful record, thoughtful letters come into the public record. We've seen a lot of decent people comment on things. And we've, it's hard to avoid some of the, the gross indecency as well. And you just try to be a better person than those individuals who would malign us. And I know this is going to be a contentious vote. And no matter what happens, people on this commission, it looks like are going to be really unfairly maligned. And I hope there's as much civility as possible and people recognize what a difficult decision this is. And I think there is at least consensus on moving forward with a library that's going to be the bet, to the benefit of the town. And if, you know, hopefully, hopefully people can kind of temper some of the vitriol that's going to come from this. And there's always recourse if that doesn't happen with, you know, individuals, but I'm, I'm pretty proud of actually how all the commissioners have acted. You guys have all worked your butt off. Lynn Abney has gone above and beyond and in helping with, with the, you know, these two options and drafts. And, you know, I think we should all feel really proud of, of the work that was involved. And I don't say that to, because I hope we become a self-aggrandizing board. It's just, you know, for someone that's new to the commission, it's been really impressive and I hope people will take note of that and be balanced in their feedback afterward, though I, though I have a lot of skepticism among some individuals, but again, always recourse possible.
Thank you, James. Well put. Okay, so I call the question. I read, I read the regulation amendment.
Mr. Chairman, before you call the question, you need an effective date for the regulation and I, I'd like to suggest a date if that's okay with the commissioners.
I thought we had to approve or deny before we go with the effective date. You want to do it now? Give us the effective date. What do you want to go with?
At least on August 16th, which is a little over a month away to give us all the ability to do the administrative stuff that needs to get done.
Do we have to wait that long, Lynn?
We need to advertise it, then we need to post it, and we need to print a copy for the clerk. And there's a lot of administrative stuff that needs to get done.
Okay. Who moved the question? I forgot. Mr. Chris, did you or?
The ward and this.
Is that, is that effective date satisfactory to you?
Yes.
Okay, so I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Cris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
No.
Lyra Tescornia?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
No.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
James Bash?
No.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, motion and, motion carries. Let's move on to the map change. Upon application of Edward O'Hamlin Robinson and Cole Authorized Agent for the New Canaan Library owners along with its affiliates of properties located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple Street and 444856 South Avenue for site plan approval pursuant to 8.2. A and a new section 510G7, a proposed quasi-public library overlay zone and a special permit, permit pursuant to A2B44D354464G66D and proposed sections 510CD510G3B510G7 and 8 and end of the proposed quasi-public overlay zone regulations to allow, allow removal of an existing 35,688 gross square foot library building and onsite parking and construct new 42,641 plus minus gross square feet, new library building, a new 21,700 square foot library green, open to the public and associated site infrastructure and landscape improvements. All patron and employee parking will be off-site and existing parking facilities located within 500 feet of the buildings. See schedules A, B, and C. Proposed plans and studies submitted in support of this application, properties in the business A and apartment zone and the proposed quasi-public library overlay zone at 151 Main, 64 Maple, 44 South, 48 South, and 56 South. Do I have a motion and remembering that A and B were the same? Do I have a motion for approval or denial? This is the easier one, guys.
I'll, I'll move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Got reasons for approval?
I think they're pretty well stated in the resolution itself.
Okay. I concur. I, I agree. I, I would also bring into incorporation the prior conversation we just had. We can incorporate that all into the approval. For, for those who vote against, I would also add having to do a changing, changing the zoning boundary that it's suitable for the intended location as the library is adjacent to downtown. So it's actually the perfect spot for the library and is actually much better than what you see in many other towns where we don't have the library effectively part of the town. So any other comment on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, effective date.
This is Lynn. Could I offer an effective date for the map change as well?
Same date?
No, it has to be after. I would suggest August 30th. It's two weeks later.
We, we need two weeks?
Just to do all the paperwork, yes.
Can't do the paperwork at the same time. It's the other.
I mean, it, it's the tight window.
Mr. Ward, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion of the motion? Okay, I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Cris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Lyra Tescornia?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Item number three, the special permit site plan discussion and consideration of the request of Edward O'Hamlin Robinson Cole Authorization for the New Canaan Library owners along with its affiliates of properties located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple Street, and 444856 South Avenue for
Thank you.
Oh, right, right, sorry. Did we move these around?
Yeah, I think you started with a special permit, didn't you?
I think we've already done that. Option A, I think is.
A REG amendment, which is the overlay zone.
I don't think, I don't think did the REG amendment yet.
No, we did. I started with the REG amendment. That was the overlay zone.
Was it the map?
I think you read the intro to the special permit when you were introducing the REG amendment.
No, that was item number one. So that was the REG amendment. We did the REG amendment, right, Pete?
I
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you did the REG amendment. You, you might have misstated, but you, the intent was to do the REG amendment, then the MAC, map amendment, then the special permit.
Right.
And the special permit can't be effective until the effective date of the latter of the map amendment or the REG amendment. And I think the map amendment, Lynn, was later in time, so the effective date of the special permit will be, can be the same date as the effective date of the MAC amendment.
Right.
The map, the map amendment was 8:30, so the special permit could be effective 8:30 or 8:31, whatever you choose.
Right.
So that, that effectively, this is Dan Radman, so that effectively would push the 120 day deadline window into 2022.
Yeah, it would be 120 days from the effective date. So I don't have the calendar in front of me, but that sounds like 2022.
Okay, so that's all correct then.
New Year's Day.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, but we still have to do the special permits.
Right.
Yes.
And Lynn, that is, I think what's messing me up here is we got a different order here on the, on the agenda. So that's item number two, right?
Yes, the special, yes.
Okay, so upon application, Edward O'Hamlin Robinson Call LLP Authorized Agent for the New Canaan Library owners along with its affiliates of properties located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 444856 South Avenue for site plan approval pursuant to A2A and new section 5.10G7, a proposed quasi-public library overlay zone and a special permit pursuant to A2B44D354C654C464G66D and proposed sections of 510CD510G3B510G7 and 8 of the proposed quasi-public overlay zone regulations to allow removal of an existing 35,688 gross square foot library building and onsite parking and construct 42, new 42,641 gross square feet, new library building, a new 21,700 square feet library green, open to the public and associated site infrastructure and landscape improvements. All patron and employee parking bill off-site and existing parking facilities located within 500 feet of the new building. See schedules A, B, and C, the proposed plans and stu- studies submitted in support of this application, properties in the business A apartment zone and the proposed quasi-public library overlay zone at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 44 South, 48 South, and 56 South Avenue. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Commissioner Cris, I move we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Claire?
Yes, sorry.
There you are. Okay, discussion of the motion. Certainly on the REG amendment, we've already spent a good amount of time. I will note, and we have this in the appro, in the approval for option A, suitable location. However, we end up with the preservation and the green, I, I think both of those, however they come out, will be positive. I think the design elements are excellent. Transportation utilities and services, we've, we've addressed that. We've addressed environmental protection and conservation. Long-term viability in my mind, very, very important to what we're doing here for the library, a new, long-term viable library. And I refer back to my comments on the P O C D and the purposes, the regulations on the REG amendment. Anybody else?
Commissioner Cris, Mr. Chairman, I would concur with your comments. I would see this new building as a significant enhancement to the long-term health and welfare of the town. And very consistent with the plan of conservation development as, as you've stated it.
Anybody else?
One comment, typically when you approve a special permit, you make a finding that it's consistent with the regulations, with the standards of the regulations which you just adopted. This becomes effective, obviously, in effect last because it's subject to the effective date of the, of the REG change, so. But you usually make a finding that there's consistency with the, with the regulation that you just adopted.
Oh, this Commissioner Cris, I would say that the, it's the finding of the commission that approving of the special permit is consistent with the various regulations of planning and zoning regulations of the town of Canaan.
Okay, I call the question.
Chairman, sorry, that's Lynn. The, the effective date is going to be August 30th or August 31st or?
Didn't think we did effective dates on special permits.
Well, it's got to be effective af, I guess the same day. Okay.
It, it's effective after the adoption of the regulation. And it, it, and then technically, since the regulation is an overlay zone, it shouldn't be effective until the overlay zone becomes effective. So you could say it's effective subsequent to the modification of the, of the map and the regulations. Immediately upon which the later of, the latter of the two will be August 30th for the map.
I would concur with that.
Okay. You all said there, Lynn?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Cris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Again, to be clear, we're voting on option A.
That's correct.
I vote no.
Okay, Claire Tescornia?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
No.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
James Bash?
No.
Okay, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
This is, this is Dan Radman. For the record, do we also have to vote on option B?
Yeah, I spoke with Pete on that and Pete said we do not since they are mutually exclusive. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that says somebody can't make a motion, but, but if you've approved option A, it precludes the approval of option B.
Okay. Okay, I just, I know it's getting late. We have inclusionary zoning to, to discuss. I, I just Okay, I just, um, I know it's getting late. We have inclusionary zoning to, to discuss. I, I just have a, a couple of more thoughts. You know, I, the first, I'd, I'd like to thank the New Canaan Library and the team there. Through a lot, and I think they have done a heck of a lot of wonderful work. Um, and, and I think that, you know, those, those individuals in the long term will be able to say what they contributed um, to New Canaan. What, what I would also say though, is to the library stewards, is with the approval that we've given, you know, certain, everybody is largely, I think we all agree, whether we voted yes or no, is, is we're providing a fair amount of latitude as to what ends up happening to the nineteen thirteen, nineteen thirty-six, thirty-seven library. And I, the way I look about, at this, is, is this is a huge opportunity. I, I think that, and we talked about this, that the town has really lined up in the feeling that there should be some preservation, and, and where we disagree is how to do it and what exactly it is. But I think the town has really lined up that there has to be some real and significant preservation. Um, and it's certainly not, you know, some of the ideas that were advanced at the beginning of the process. It, it does have to be something real. And, and I think, you know, the positive of this is, you know, there's, I know there's people upset with this decision. But on the other hand, I, I think you, you at the library, you know, the, the guiders of the library, you have, you know, strong support from this commission, from town council, from the selectmen, and many others to put into place an appropriate preservation of the library. And, and I think it's just a wonderful opportunity for you. You can go ahead with your project. Um, but you can also, you know, preserve the library. And it's funny, one of the things I was thinking about was, look, we, I go to the library a lot. We all go to the library for different reasons. I tend to check out books on history. That's what I love to do. I read history. The nineteen thirteen library is your history. It's the library's history. So, and, and, you know, libraries are, they're retainers of history. You know, we learn from history to understand and develop into the future. So, I, I, this is just, I think it's, it's an amazing opportunity. And, and I, you know, and I think the entire commission agreed that you have a wonderful architect team on hand. They do have a track record, as I've been told by certain members of the commission, in, in terms of doing great things with preservation. So, you know, I would urge you to just seize that opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just add a couple of comments?
Please.
Totally agreed with all the points you brought up and all your observations on how we've come to this position and what we're expecting out of the library. I would just like to add that all of us commissioners, all of us want to see this project succeed. All of us, including myself, who are supporters of the preservation of the historic portion of library. All of us love what we see as far as the new library is concerned. There's no, there's no doubt about that. There's no argument about that. We don't, e- even the preservationists in town that are, are, have been very vocal about trying to keep the older part of the library, none of them ever contest the design integrity, the viability, the, the, the great addition to the town that the new library will be. That is, that is unrefuted. That has to be made clear to all those people, you know, to Lynn's, you know, comment earlier, who are making comments online while we're meeting and all the articles and all the Facebook pages and all the, the really vile commentary that's going on in the background while we try and get through this application. Everyone in this town wants a successful and beautiful and new and modern library. It's just, different people have different approaches as to that preservation component. And I think that is where, and I've said this before, I think that's where the library board, their team as a whole have a missed opportunity. There's, there's been outspoken opinions on the preservation of this from the get-go. And they had the opportunity to come to us with a fully vetted application that included preservation, and we wouldn't be struggling with this right now. But here we are, and here we voted. And I agree with you. I, I think we have to trust that the library is gonna do something at this point that's going to be acceptable to all the people in town, at least the majority of the people in town. You'll never please everyone, right? And I, I hope it does turn out well. I think they've got a great team in Centerbrook, can do a great job, provided they're given the, their directive to do, to do so.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dan. Okay, let's move on. Item four, we just did. Item five, inclu- inclusionary zoning. Krista, Lynn, you guys running this piece for us?
I would assume so.
Pete Gelderman, are you able to stay on a little bit longer with us?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
Oh, um, I, Krista, do you want to start, or do, do you want me to give a brief overview, or just?
Um, I, I'll give a brief overview. Lynn, I have, I apologize, I'm, I'm on a trip right now and I'm a little bit discombobulated. Um, how many, we're doing this for the entire commission. How many members of the entire commission are not on the subcommittee in terms of like, they won't, won't even know where we're coming at this from? Like, I don't want to spend too much time if pretty much everybody knows.
I think there's only a few members. I don't know. I don't think um, Mr. Ward and, uh.
But he did send it out with the app, he did send it out.
Yeah.
Review it.
Okay, well, I just wanted to give a little background to how we ended up here. And then we'll go over, I mean, the point tonight, Lynn, is to go over what was sent out and get feedback like we just did on the, on the library.
Yeah, to get feedback, and then we can come back in a couple of weeks, in July twenty-seventh, and we can, you know, present final wording. And we have no timeline, because it's a commission presented regulation um, change, so there is no, um, hard stop, no, uh, no timeline that we have to observe. It's, it's our own pace, but, um, you know, if we have everything that we want, once we have it ready, we have to set a public hearing.
Okay. All right, so as a quick background, the subcommittee has been talking about affordable housing, I think, since about the beginning of this year, um, the beginning of twenty twenty-one. And we sort of landed in a place where we thought one actionable thing that we could move on rather quickly, and that could have a, an important impact for our town is something called inclusionary zoning. Um, inclusionary zoning is where you set a certain percentage of new uh, housing units aside in a development, and say they have, they're required to be affordable. And you define what affordable means in that context. Um, and it's something that's used pretty commonly. Um, it's being done in pretty much every town around us. Um, but we've looked at their regulations, so it's a pretty common practice. It's something that can help us get closer to, um, our ten percent goal of affordable housing under eight thirty G. Um, and so we have worked on some draft language. We've been talking about it, uh, probably for a month or two now. Um, and that was what was sent out to everybody, uh, prior to this meeting tonight. Um, the version Lynn sent out is a little different than the last version I had, so I'll, I'll try and go over it and maybe add some comments of some things that I thought maybe could or should be different. Um, so the first thing, if you want us to.
Krista, once, you can keep talking. I'm gonna pull it up on screen, so it can do the same thing we, the other one.
Okay, perfect. Um, so on page one, something that I did not see there that I added recently was a change to our definition for the term affordable housing, which currently reads as basically you make less than or equal to the median, area median income um, in our community, and that basically sets it at anyone a hundred percent or below. And I think what we're trying to achieve through this regulation and elsewhere in our regulations is people at eighty percent or below, because that's what meets, um, federal and state regulatory requirements. I think that, as we've discussed in the planning subcommittee, there is need, obviously, for, um, some sort of housing programs, um, you know, opportunities for people who are above eighty percent but still don't make, um, enough money to afford market rate in our community. Um, but I, I think that should have a different definition than affordable housing. I, I, I think we should keep affordable housing at eighty percent or below. So that is not, well, you can see there's some blanks up there where it says section two point two, and that's where I was gonna put that in. Um, so the inclusionary zoning regulation is been put into our existing section seven point six. We have a section seven point six in our regulations, um, that sets up the inclusionary zoning fee that we currently collect into the housing trust funds. Um, so the first two sections here, A and B under section seven point six are modifications to existing language, and then the third section, section C, sets up the new language, um, about inclusionary zoning. Um, and so under A, again, I'm not sure this showed up on the first page, but I think the title there should be Housing Trust Fund. It's currently labeled Inclusionary Zoning Fee, and I, you know, I, I guess I don't have a problem either way. I just think Inclusionary Zoning Fee can also be confused with what we're later doing with Inclusionary Zoning, where we may be collecting a fee in lieu of people providing these affordable units, and I just thought it would be better to have two noticeably different names. So I would call section A Housing Trust Fund. And this is pretty much all the language that we currently have, um, under applicability. We did add a new section here, uh, two B, which says the Housing Trust Fund money, um, basically can only be dispersed out of the trust fund by the town of New Canaan, the housing authority, or other nonprofits as authorized by the town. Um, that's sort of a, a holding space to make sure that until we figure out who and how and if we want private developers to be able to access that Housing Trust Fund money, we don't just leave the door open. So we're closing the door, at least temporarily, until we figure out the, the longer term plan. Um, just some minor changes to section three exemptions, really just to try and clarify what we're talking about. In section B, under Housing Affordability Plan requirements, um, this may, well, it does look like a lot of changes specifically under three. Um, so we, under eight thirty G, anyone who's building affordable housing has to provide a housing affordability plan. And there are some things that are required, um, through that statute that say, you know, things that you have to do, and that's this whole list under number three here, A through S. Um, the first, let me see. I think the first, uh, A through G, I believe, are all things that are required. They are all things that are required under, oh wait, I forgot, these are, Lynn's are in a different order than mine. All right, so back up. There are things in here that are required under state statute. In my version, I've listed which state statute and why we included them. Then there are a number of things in here for the Housing Affordability Plan that I think are important for the town to require a developer to, um, give to them, so that they, the town can track where these affordable units are, how big they are, how many bedrooms, that type of thing. And then the third category of things in this long list under number three is stuff that I just thought was a good idea, based on other places' affordability plans that I was looking at. Um, and so if we, if anyone feels this list is too long, or specific things are in here, you know, don't make sense to you, or you don't like them, you know, let's, let's open it up to talk about that. But I, I did have a reason for all of these.
Krista, could I just add one thing? I think it would be useful to just add as an additional item that, um, we, any proposed project may consider the state's qualified application plan for low-income housing tax credit allocation as an additional item of support.
All right, I may have to make you say that again. Any proposed project, it can states what?
Qualified application plan, Q A P, for low-income housing tax credits may be considered as a supportive item.
Okay.
Just, I've, I've said what we need to add, but this, the Q A P is how credits are allocated, and it might provide support for a developer coming in who could use low-income housing tax credits as we have in our several, um, affordable housing projects in town. Thank you.
Got it.
Sounds very reasonable.
Add that.
Krista, this is Dan Radman. Should we also include in here, under line item three, uh, compliance with parking regulations and parking counts per town regulations?
Um, I don't have an issue with that. I would assume they would have to do that anyway. I mean, the Housing Afford- Affordability Plan is really trying to get the applicant to talk about, you know, how they're going, what, what units are gonna make affordable, where are they gonna be in the project? Are they um, gonna be built prorata with the other units in the project? Who's going to make sure they're affordable, you know, all of that type of stuff? So, I mean, we can add that in. Um, but like I said, I think they would still have to comply with that, because this doesn't really override any of our other regulations. It just adds to what's required for projects, including affordable units.
I, I just want to avoid the situation where a developer is justifying a reduced parking count
Okay.
for, for the, um, viability of the project.
Right. Okay.
This is, uh, John Criss. Under the, um, recently passed, some recently passed reg- legislation out of Har- Hartford, uh, it overrides towns', uh, parking, uh, rules for, uh, multi housing, multi, uh, bedroom houses. And so I think one of the issues this commission may very well address is that, uh, we as a commission would need to opt out of that. And the town council would need to also opt out of that with at least a two-thirds vote. So, um, that is something, uh, related to this that, uh, we may very well want to address sooner than later.
That's good to know. When did that get passed, John?
Two weeks ago, something like that.
Wow.
Lynn would know exactly, but it's very recently. It was not only parking counts, so it's a maximum of two, uh, parking spaces can be required for, uh, a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom. So it caps out at two.
Caps out at two.
Caps out at two, which is inconsistent with the approaches we have taken.
Right.
There's also the accessory dwelling unit issue, uh, as part of that, which also has an opt-out. And so, again, that's something this commission may wish to take up sooner than later, uh, as well as the town council, though I certainly do not speak for the town council.
John, that was the legislation Francis Pickering talked to us about, right?
Yes, sir, that was.
Okay.
Um, al- also, uh, as, as part of that, uh, legislation, uh, he mentioned that it's a couple hundred pages and fairly deep. And there may be other issues, uh, there that we want to be particularly aware of, and perhaps may need to take some action on. And so this is something that perhaps, uh, this subcommittee or perhaps another subcommittee may want to, uh, may want to address, because there, there seems to be a lot of meat in there. And I, I, I got the sense that the West Cog people were to be very helpful to us and to other towns in, uh, sort of, uh, deconstructing that and coming up with some, uh, potential to-do lists. That was my takeaway, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I was, I, I think I said this last time, I've, I've been in, very impressed by West Cog's knowledge and performance, uh, over, uh, the past year or so, so we, we need to use them more.
And by the way, our office would be happy to provide the commission with some, um, with a breakdown, kind of a memo with respect to that legislation that's been passed. We have, we have put together, um, some of that information, so we can, we'll provide that to the commission as well.
I would welcome that.
Absolutely, yeah. Pete, uh, since you have the floor, any comments on, um, have you had a chance to, uh, review this yet or not?
Quickly, yes, but not in depth. But one comment I had was, um, in order to, I, I think the commission ought to consider using state median income rather than area median income for purposes of, uh, you know, getting units that would count toward the ten percent. Usually, it's, it's state median income or area median income, whichever is less. And so if you use. And so if you use area median income, it's almost certain to be higher than state median income. In New Canaan and therefore. For purposes of the, of maximizing the benefit you'll get from inclusionary housing. I think using state median income might be preferable.
Right. And that was our intent is to use state median income and to. We have a definition in our zoning regulations already for median income that I believe. Says exactly what the, what you just said, which is that everyone is the lesser. The only place in here that we reference using area median income, and we'll get to this at the very end, is when we're talking about. Fee and lieu payments and how we want to calculate them. But we'll, we'll come back to that.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
Krista, just to go to your point, the definition in the regs for median income is after adjustments for family size. The lesser of the most recently reported state median income or the most recently reported area median income for the Stanford or. PMSA as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
That works.
Right.
Yep.
So Dan, I have an idea for where to put your parking comment. We feel like to be explicit about that. I'll bring it up again when we get there. Um, okay, so if there's no other comments generally on the housing affordability plan requirements. The real meat of the subject matter is in section C, which is new, which is called inclusionary zoning. And like we do in all of our regulations, we talk about the purpose of why we're doing this, which is to create a diverse housing portfolio. Which is one of our goals of our P O C D and also to help move us towards the ten percent housing affordability requirement of. General Stat to eight thirty G. So this regulation here would only apply, if you see under section two applicability. To projects constructing four or more dwelling units in the multifamily zone, the apartment zone, or the business zone. And so, you know, this is obviously where we're most likely to see larger scale multifamily development happen in those zones. It, it gets us sort of into the core of the downtown area where, you know, those would probably be most appropriate to happen. We do go on to say that projects have to have access to public water and sewer. We probably do. I don't know. I've never actually overlaid the. Water and sewer map with some of these zones. There may be some things in the multifamily zone that fall outside of it, but I, I think. Those, all those things kind of overlap with each other. And in terms of the requirements, so under inclusionary zoning requirements. I moved a couple of things around here. It's generally the same. We have a table here that shows how many affordable units are required, depending on the number of units you're, you're building. And I did, under A, add. In this version, it falls elsewhere, but I moved it up to here that there will be a deed restriction for a minimum of forty years from the date of first occupancy. Because that's, that's how eight thirty G works and we wanted to mirror that. But so in terms of the table. If you're building four to ten units, you provide one that's affordable, eleven to fifteen units, two, sixteen to twenty. Oh, wait.
Or nine, right?
Yep, alright. I'm, I'm looking at two different versions. Anyway, look at the table on the screen and that's. And that's what we're looking at requiring this. So different places do it differently. We've talked about this in the subcommittee. Some places say a certain percentage of your units have to be affordable. So regardless of, you know, how many you're building, maybe I think Darian does twelve point five percent of your units have to be affordable. These ranges here give us a little less of a burden on people doing smaller developments. And yet keeps us somewhere between the ten and I think twenty percent range of. The number of units in a project being affordable. And you, you know, that ten percent is kind of the magic number. You want to stay at or above. Because if you're staying below ten percent, you're not working towards your ten percent housing affordability goal. So that's kind of how we've settled on that. B under there talks about if, if you have a fraction of units, as you only would if you have thirty one plus. Then you round up to the next higher whole number. And that also will come into play when we talk about fee and lieu as well. So in exchange for providing these affordable units, it's generally considered good form to offer some bonuses. To the developer to help them compensate for. The loss of revenue they'll have by creating the affordable units. And so under section four, we go through. What those bonuses are. A talks about a density bonus to twenty units per acre in the multifamily and apartment zones.
Is it now? What is it now?
I know. I don't have all of my old papers for that. Oh, actually, maybe I do.
Compare and contrast would be very useful on A through D. So we, good sense that we give up.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I've said to the subcommittee in recent times that. Section four is probably my least competent part of this regulation, so I. I'm glad to give you the compare and contrast. I'm also really open to feedback and comments on what would be. Trying to see if I can see what it is now. Apartment zone now. Alright, so multifamily now is four to six dwelling units per acre. And apartment zone is eight point seven dwelling units per acre. So this is a hefty increase.
That's a, that's a math. So we're saying that they'll more than double their density if we, if they imply to this? So we're going from eight to twenty?
Yes. I'd like to tell you why I thought that was a good number. I think, you know what? I remember why I thought that was a good number. There was a draft of inclusionary zoning done for the town of New Canaan, I think back in two thousand and ten. As part of a, a study of some other regulations that were going on with the state. And I, I believe Planometrics was the consultant that did that draft. And that is where I took the twenty dwelling units breaker from was straight from their version. Assuming that at least some of the commissioners on this commission or the people who were on the commission at the time had discussed it and thought that was a good idea. I would agree, it's a pretty substantial increase and, you know, maybe we need to talk about that more.
Yeah, what, this is Dan Radman. What I'm afraid of is with that type of density in the apartment zone per acre. You're going to be talking about multi-level buildings that will exceed the height restrictions of the apartment zone.
Right. So on, on that note, and so this is where I struggle with this section. Because as I'm first to say, I'm not an architect, but if we skip B for a moment and go to C under here. We do give a height increase bonus from up to four stories or forty five feet. Maximum building height or fifty feet total building height. So yeah, they don't, I mean, so there are. These factors kind of layer on top of each other and limit one another, right? Like, I don't really even know if you could achieve twenty dwelling units per acre. When you're limited to a four story building height unless you had some sort of massive acreage that you're going to build on. Which I'm not sure is available in our existing town boundaries. And so that's, you know. I, I think that, that we have other limits here, but I'm not sure again if it's enough.
Yeah, John Cris, i- i- if we, let, let's say it's four stories. And twenty units on an acre. Okay, so we're maxing out. Where, where do the cars go? Okay, if we assume like two, two bedrooms, I'm not sure, I mean, how to square that circle? If we assume two, each is, each is a two bedroom unit. We have four floor, we have, okay, so we have four floors, two bedrooms, so we have. Five units per floor. Let's say some are ground units, which probably unlikely. I, I'm not sure where you put twenty, what is it? Forty parking spaces? I, I don't know.
That's exactly the point. There are things here that will restrict these bonuses to the extent that. To certain, maybe these bonuses aren't even that useful after all, because you're right, there's only so much you can put on a site. And you're required to have a certain amount of parking. In the apartment and multifamily zone, you're required to have a certain amount of open space or landscaping. You're required, you have, you're restricted on the amount of coverage you can have on the site. And you've got density and then you've got height. So like, some of these bonuses, while they may sound scary or may sound good on paper. May not even be that effective in real life. And I say that fully knowing that I'm not the one that can figure out if they're effective or not. I'm just telling you, you know, that I, there's, they're going to start to nullify each other at some point. And I don't know if that point is a place we're comfortable at or.
It's a linear programming issue, as I see it, that, you know, you have various constraints and one's going to be more concerning the other depending on what we do. But I, I mean, this is not going to get solved here, but I think this is a, a start. And gives us a sense of some of the variables we need to think about. So I think for that purpose, it's doing its job admirably.
Could I add something characteristically? I have never seen in my investing experience in these. In some twenty states, a project that is not, consists of a combination of. Studio one and two bedroom units. And in the vast majority of cases, low income housing tax credits are the source of capital. Why we need to be very careful on this, and I, I, I really think Krista's done an incredible job here.
Yeah.
Is, is that we need to be wary that the likely deployment of. The affordable housing in New Canaan would be for existing large structures, which would be reconfigured. To create a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, I'm sorry, of studio one and two bedrooms. Which will allow the developer to get more bang for the buck. And the, I, I was in Hartford last week. And, you know, the, the state is quite serious about this parking. Because it was a way to deal with concerns about exclusionary zoning. The point that I'm trying to make is we are unlikely to see a traditional. Call it, you know, nine hundred, two thousand square foot, two bedroom unit mix. We're going to see people use square footage very cleverly to create a mix of units. To help qualify for the unit count under eight thirty G. So thi- this is a remarkable draft. In that it covers an awful lot of issues, but to the extent that Dan or others with actual architectural expertise. Could look at this section, it would be really helpful.
Krista, hi, it's Kent Turner. On item C, the five foot setback, could you clarify that?
Lynn and I had discussed that as buildings went taller, we didn't, you know, we, we wanted them to start to step back in height. And I think I also looked at the village district design guidelines and also tried to see like what was. I, I think this language about maintaining a cornice line along the street was probably taken straight from the village district design guidelines. But anyway, the intention was that as you go taller, that you start to scale back from the street. So that it's not so overwhelming to the pedestrian environment.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that and, and agree with that totally. What I'm confused about is on the. Indicates five feet of building height. And then we'll step back five feet. That almost sounds like for every five additional feet, I have to step back five feet.
Right, that's different than the draft I'm looking at. Lynn, is that my old language or do you know if you put that language in there?
I think it says each additional five, additional beyond the fifty feet, right?
Well, it says, it says for each additional five feet of building height above that allowed in the underlying zone. I think it means above that which is allowed in the underlying zone.
Right.
The building side will step back five feet. We're talking.
Yeah, I think that's a previous draft, the one that I have in my hands, which obviously is something I revised, it didn't make it into this. Says that the commission may require that any building height above thirty feet or two and a half stories, which is basically what most of the underlying zones are. Be set back from the facade of the building so as to maintain a cornice line along the street. So I got rid of this five feet thing and just said you have to keep stepping it back, but I don't tell you how.
Okay.
I don't know if that are amenable.
Yes, that, that sounds very good.
Okay. Lynn, are you there?
Krista, can I bring up one other point?
Sure.
Just on the, going back to Art's, Chris Herring commentary on the unit mix. So if we take Art's comment that, you know, given the cost of construction, many of these will be, say, repurposed commercial buildings. So the one that kind of pops off the page for me is the Unimim building across from Carl Chevrolet. A, a large building there with the parking underground. And with something like that, are, are we saying that. The unit mix we have up above the idea that the units need to be seventy five percent of the market rate units? Is that, is that paired such that? You know, in combination, all the studios add up to, you know, seventy five percent of. The other units, which may be a, a different configuration? Or can we dictate that? Or is that up to their imagination?
So the way I envisioned it in this year, what I believe you're referencing is back under the housing affordability plan requirements. I would give you the number or the letter, but it's going to be different on your. Says no affordable housing unit shall be smaller than seventy five percent of a market rate unit containing the same number of bedrooms. And, you know, I, I clearly took that from somewhere else. I can't tell you where off the top of my head. But the intent is that you're not just making all of your affordable units, the tiniest units in the building. And if it's a studio, it's at least seventy five percent of a market rate studio. If it's a one bedroom, it's seventy five percent of the set. So, you know, you can't just say, yes, they're both one bedrooms, but because this one's affordable, I'm going to make it a quarter of the size of this other one bedroom. Like, you have to have some sort of parity there. So I was not envisioning that you add up the total square footage of all the, you know. All of the one bedrooms that are market rate and affordable and do it that way. It was really on a unit by unit basis is what I was intending.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I know, I, I think it's, I think it makes sense to me. I just, I wasn't sure where we, if we need to spell that, spell that out or whether that's. That's helpful to hear, though.
I think I would consider that an optional, one of the optional things under the housing affordability plan requirements. I, I saw it somewhere else and it seemed like a good idea, but it's, it's not part of the state regulations to my knowledge. So that was more of just a. Copy and paste. Lynn, are you there? Lynn? I wanted to ask you about B, under inclusionary zoning bonuses. You and I had discussed on the phone getting rid of. Any referent, any reference to a floor area ratio increase in the business district? Is that something that. You still want to consider or, or where do we stand on that?
Yeah, so in the, in the, we have F A R requirements in the business zones. And it, it, it's restrictive if we're going to add. Dwelling units. So the thought was, and, you know, this is open for discussion. But the thought was that maybe we just eliminate the F A R requirements for dwelling units in the downtown. And maybe that allows the commission a little bit more discretion in allowing it where it's more, most appropriate. So. So that there's also a little bit of flexibility as a part of the, of giving it as an amenity to the developer.
Okay, so effectively we would eliminate B under the bonuses.
Yes, if the, if the commission's. Thinking is yes, then yes. Then we would eliminate it.
So here are my thoughts on where we go, because like I said, I'm, this is the shakiest part for me is the bonuses. The best I think I can do in terms of helping you guys, and then you're going to have to help me, is give you both the comparison of. You know, what the densities and heights and coverages are now and what they would be under this regulation. And then also I could provide you with what the surrounding towns have given as their bonuses. And you guys could, you know, see sort of the realm of what is out there specifically. And whether we want to adopt those things or do our own thing.
In addition, it's John Cris. In addition to those two data points, which I would see is very helpful. I would benefit from some color commentary from maybe the zoning officers in those towns who'd say, okay. We have these bonuses, here's how they're working. And give some real life examples of how these things have panned out. I would find that very, very helpful. I'm looking for a live fire test of, okay, here are the rules and here's how they work in practice. So that kind of colored commentary from you or Lynn, I think would be very helpful to me anyway.
Yeah, I'll see what we can do with that. Lynn and I have had conversations in the past with Darian and Greenwich. Their bonuses that they offer. You know, in some ways those towns, I, I, I think it's a useful data point. I think they also have a different development pattern. You know, we don't have the coast road, we don't have. I think they also have a different development pattern, you know, we don't have the coast road, we don't have I ninety-five. You know, they, they just are dealing on some level with some different issues, um, but I agree with you that hearing how other people have had success or not is, is useful, so we'll see what we can do.
But just to add, this is Lynn, just to add to Krista's point, the, the other thing to keep in mind, um, the development patterns are different with some of the, um, some of the towns, but, um, this, this regulation should be crafted as to what works for New Canaan. Like, we can take others, what others did, but then we should, we shouldn't just cut and paste necessarily, we should craft it to figure out what, what would or wouldn't work in where we're looking.
I can comment, by the way, about what has happened in surrounding towns, both with and without comparable structures. One thing that is really important to recognize is that New Canaan is unique right now in that the affordable housing units that we've added have largely been fresh construction or new construction, and we've not had a major low income. The stuff that we've done in town has included workforce components, which is income high up to eighty percent in the surrounding towns, including Fairfield, including particularly, particularly, um, Darianne. You've had very large development of multi-unit new construction. The commonality in all cases is that the developers who have built this stuff have used the low-income housing tax credit as a source of capital. It's highly irregular for anybody to build affordable housing without using the Lytec as the source of the capital. And that becomes really important and, and why my earlier reference to the QAP, because you, um, there are two types of tax credits, but the most valuable ones require you to compete on a statewide basis for nine percent credits using the Qualified Application Plan. So the, uh, surrounding towns in, in Stanford in particular has had lots of replacement units built elsewhere in the city of Stanford, so developers who are building in the higher, um, cost range in the southern end of town now are frequently providing replacement units on a deed-restricted basis elsewhere in the town of Stanford, or in the city of Stanford, rather. That's a little bit of context, I'm sure that if the, uh, development officers would provide that information, John, it would be useful to the group, but I can tell you that, um, you know, the New Canaan so far, I actually think of another building, which is the old Saddleory Building, is the kind of building which would frequently be converted throughout New England into affordable housing using rehabilitation tax credits, as opposed to new construction tax credits.
I concur, uh, you know, I don't wanna do a cut and paste, but I always, I don't like to reinvent the wheel either, and also want to ensure that we're not, um, stepping in any landmines and that we are thinking through this, uh, as thoroughly as possible, and if we can benefit from others' experience, fabulous.
From seeing the, um, from being astride some of the chatter with, um, Darianne, um, they have a lot to say. So whether it's the planner who Lynn knows well, or it's the P and Z chair, so I, I think that could understanding the development patterns are different, I think there definitely could be some great learning there.
Fabulous.
Yeah, they've had a, uh, they've had a number of eight thirty G cases there that they've had to contend with over the years, so they've definitely got a lot more of a track record with that.
Okay, we will work on those three things, and like I said, if, if, once you get that, or even before you get that, you have thoughts on this section four, please send them along, because I, I think that is the part that's really the heart of this, I mean, we, we talk about how we're gonna get these affordable units, but then what are we gonna give away in exchange, and are we okay with giving that stuff away? I mean, that's really a big question. Um, Dan, back to your prior comment about parking, at the bottom of section four, we say all other zoning requirements shall be governed by the underlying zoning district, meaning you don't get to override the parking or other things, that all applies, the only bonuses you get are the ones that are listed above. Um, and we could make that more specific if people want us to call out things that you're not getting a bonus in, or any sort of reduction in.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, just my suggestion, but that sentence, if it could be modified to read all other zoning requirements, comma, including parking count requirements, shall be governed by the underlying zoning district.
Okay.
This is Chris Herring. Dan, one of the comments I've seen in some of the other write-ups is that requiring higher ratios of parking is discriminatory and add to the cost of developments. So is your rationale that, and it actually is used to remember the other zoning incentives to, to actually incent more affordable housing, so what, what's the rationale behind not wanting to, you know, add that incentive here?
Uh, i- it's not about adding incentive, it's about, it's about maintaining the parking requirement that our town currently upholds, what I'm, what I'm reacting to is developers will, and whether that be an eight thirty G application or a larger housing development application, developers will i- inevitably look to cut costs specifically when it comes to parking densities, whether it's an underground structure or a surface lot, or a partially covered structure for parking. Um, that's where they can save money on the development, and they'll look to do that, and sometimes that'll be an ask to reduce the parking count, I mean, we already have certain guidelines in town worth, you know, fee in lieu of parking, um, options that I personally don't agree with, but I, I know they exist. Um, they, i- i- it's, it's just another stopgate measure to prevent us from, uh, allowing larger developments to be built with minimal or undersized parking conditions.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is you'd rather give away additional density on the actual building mass than you'd rather give that away versus give away parking?
No, no, I didn't say that.
To, it's a linear, it's a linear kind of calculation, as, as John and, and Art put, so I'm just, I just think that we need to consider different gives and puts in terms of looking at the cost model of, of the construction, whether it be permit fees, cost of parking, cost of height, you know, all these different things, so.
It's
calculation.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I, I don't want it to be a give, it's a, it's a matter of the developers doing the proper front-end calculations, planning the developments so as to not say that I can only get this project done if I reduce my parking count by this much, because that'll allow me the coverage that I'm looking for, or that'll allow me the density or the, you know, the height that I'm looking for. Um, I mean, we went through that with the, um, Canaan Parish project, right? That, it, it's a technically a five-story building, although it was submitted as a four-story building with underground parking, and that's just a manner in which they were able to get the parking they needed by elevating the building, and they didn't have the surface area for surface parking on the property, and they put them under the buildings, that's one strategy, but they still conform to the parking requirements that we have in, in the town. Um, you know, we just, I, I'm just looking for a, a safeguard in here that we're not losing parking in these larger developments, especially if it's gonna be bleeding into the business zone or the apartment zone, which it'll be, you know, um, closer to the center of town where the parking issue is a larger issue.
Dan, um, you know, I think that what we're gonna see here is that, A, your points are really important, but I think the horse is already way out of the barn based on what they did in the legislature, and it's very closely linked to the concept of transit-oriented development because we have a train station and because of the variety of compromises that were made in the legislature.
Yeah.
I'll look forward to seeing Pete's memo, but Mike, and I, I support everything that you and Krista said, but I don't believe this is gonna be something we're gonna have control of because of what came down in the legislature.
Yeah, you might, you're very right. Absolutely true.
Okay, um, just to move it along and try and finish it up, um, the last section is application requirements. Um, I've simplified this a little bit from the version you're looking at, I've basically eliminated A under, um, section five because all, pretty much all of those things were required under the Housing Affordability. I think all of those things were required somehow under the Housing Affordability Plan section, so it, it seems redundant to put it there. So, um, the things that are currently in my version required are number one, the Housing Affordability Plan, which we talked about earlier, what's required to be submitted there. And then secondarily, B talks, well, my B, which is your C, talks about, um, fee-in-lieu, uh, payments for some or all of the required affordable units. And basically, this leaves us a release valve if somebody, for whatever reason, feels they're unable to provide the affordable units that are required. I, I haven't reviewed the wording Lynn has on the screen, but, um, my version here says, if fee-in-lieu of payment is desired by the applicant, the applicant, applicant will submit to the commission a written statement requesting such payment. If fee-in-lieu is accepted by the commission, oh, uh, earlier than that, it says the commission at its absolute discretion may accept fee-in-lieu of payment, so basically what I say here, we, we used to have language in here, some of the commissioners on this, will recall, about hardship, I've eliminated that, and I just say that the commission at its absolute discretion will determine, you know, based on your written statement, if we're willing to accept fee-in-lieu of payments. And if so, um, under a letter I, it talks about what the payment will be, um, let me just see. Yeah, I think that's the same, it will take a one-time, uh, it'll take the form of a one-time cash contribution equal to three hundred percent of the area median income, um, to Pete Gelderman's earlier comment, this is the only place where I re- uh, reference area median income, because area median income will be higher than our state median income, so that three hundred percent will be a bigger number if we use area median income for a family of four. Um, I, I've settled on this as the sort of easiest way, there's so many methodologies for coming up with what this fee-in-lieu of payment looks like and how much it is. I can't remember which town I took this from, it might be Darianne, um, that they used this three hundred percent. And basically, I mean, it, it should get you close, maybe not quite, I, we talked about this in the subcommittee, and I don't have my notes in front of me if what this would garner you versus what it would actually cost, it's not gonna be quite the same as the exact cost to build the unit, um, but it would be close, and it would put a lot of money into the housing trust fund that the housing authority or ultimately other entities could use to continue to build affordable units. And that's the gist of fee-in-lieu, there's a couple other things there, but that, that's the main piece.
Yeah, this is John Chris, uh, I concur with the, uh, intent to charge a fee in lieu. Uh, the three hundred percent looks low to me, let's say it generates round numbers, three hundred thousand dollars. And my sense from conversations in the subcommittee, potentially from Commissioner Cassavant, is that you know, the, 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 the product we're putting up now in town is like four fifty apiece, a unit on average. And so this number looks low to me. That's my take.
Well, I think, I mean, I, like I said, I took the three hundred straight, I believe, from Darianne, um, but we, we can adjust that, I mean, I will, um, in the additional information I give to Lynn to send out to the commissioners, I will have the actual facts of what the area median income for a family of four is, and what three hundred percent of that would be, and then I'll show you a four hundred, five hundred percent, you know, what those numbers are, so we can see where we want to land on what that percentage is.
Thank, thank, this is Chris Herring, thank you, Chris, I, I like, I like the approach too, and just so I understand the assumptions there. So ninety-six thousand is the the area or the state median income for a family of four, so I'm assuming that would be a, a two-bedroom, um, you know, two-bath, let's call it, versus a studio, so we'd be, we'd be kind of backing into the three hundred thousand being the, the trade-off between building a two-bedroom, uh, not building a studio, for example, versus a, a single median income. That's the, that's the ratio we probably be looking to compare.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's kind of my logic, right, so if you're sixteen hundred square feet, you know, say, two-bedroom, two-bath, like, what's the cost of construction for something like that versus the fee?
Okay, yeah, I think we can get you that data, what, you know, basically what market, and what it would cost to build, yeah. I understand what you're saying, and I'll include that in the information that you have.
One, one other point, Mr. Chairman, if I remember correctly, the new legislation, uh, prohibited these housing trust funds like we have.
Oh, that's, uh, that's incorrect.
Okay.
I actually reached out to Senator Castor while she was still Senator, and, um, Senator Haskell, and they both did excellent work in confirming with independent advisors, um, that that's not the case.
Okay, great, good.
Lynn, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think you've covered everything completely, actually.
Okay, so in terms of next steps, Lynn, I'll get you the additional information that we, that's been requested tonight, um, prior to our end of July meeting, and uh, my question for you, I'm not sure if it's for you or for the commissioners, is are we ready for a public hearing then, or do we need to have additional conversations?
Do, do they, do we want an, um, an additional draft of this with the new language for the, um, July twenty-seventh meeting?
I would think so, but I just, I, I feel like I'm, based on the data that's being requested tonight, I, I mean, I want to move this as long, along as quickly as we can, but I also feel like based on the data that's being requested tonight, there might be some more decisions the commissioners need to make, although the public hearing may also give us some feedback that help us fill in those blanks.
Yeah, Krista knows exactly what I'm about to say, which is that I think we should go to a public hearing sooner than later. And the reason why is my, you know, I think a lot of us have been on the commission a long time, is the experience is that you know, we're killing ourselves doing iteration after iteration, then we do a public hearing, and invariably you actually get some very smart people who walk in and give us feedback, and, um, you know, really progresses thing, and you know, opens the kimono, so to speak, so I'm not telling you when to do it, it, it's your subcommittee, Krista, but, but my suggestion would be sooner or later.
This is John Chris, I would concur, I think, um, I see no benefit in delay, and, uh, I would favor, uh, public input and transparency, and I think, uh, making this, uh, an item for public comment is very positive.
Okay. So then we'll plan to do that at the regular meeting at the end of July.
Okay, great, Krista. Thank you so much, Lynn, thank you very much. Everybody, a difficult night, but a good night, um, everybody take care, stay safe.
Bye, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Peace.